Okay, I'd like to call to an order Clayton City Council Meeting for May 7, 2019. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. If everyone would please rise and join me for the Bledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our first item is consent calendar. I do have actually one comment speaker card here as well. So let me, let me start with that. I think this is on item 3A, Ms. Stanaway.
Ms. Stanaway. I'm sorry.
Hold up one second.
It's ready. Ann Stanaway, 1553 Haviland Place, Clayton, California. This council took an oath to protect the city, yet you continue to ratify the adoption of what you call quote summary minutes unquote. In fact, the city of Clayton does not keep summary minutes, rather it publishes abridged minutes on its website and relies on unstable quote streaming unquote equipment to keep a legally defensible record of its public deliberations. You bluster and pontificate about saving staff time and city money when there is 30-year-old free, user-friendly technology available that operates cross-platform on your smartphones and computers that can produce real-time verbatim minutes. Voice-to-text has actually been incorporated into iOS, Windows, and Android for the past 20 years. It is free, easy to use, real-time technology that requires the mere push of a button to activate. Once again, this council puts the city at an unconscionable risk for absolutely no reason. No wonder the council so fears even the remotest possibility of lawsuit. Without adequate records, Clayton simply cannot mount an affirmative defense. The question then becomes, does this neglect of the council's fiduciary duty to the city rise to the level of torturous conduct? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment on any of the consent calendar items? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Pierce.
I was going to say something actually quite the opposite. I thought we asked for summary minutes. These are not summary minutes. These are nearly verbatim minutes, and that was not the intent. So I would like us to go back to summary action minutes, please. The video is easy to watch and probably takes less time.
Any other comments?
I actually would like to, so I looked through them. I have a question on item 3A. I did look through them, and I noticed a number of mistakes in there as well. So I would like to either think about whether we want to go to those summary minutes, or then if we do, almost verbatim, then I want to make sure we get them right because there were a couple sections where we quoted to the wrong council member.
That's right.
Just sort of opposite meaning somewhere. So I actually would like to pull item 3A and continue that to our next meeting in May 7th and see if we can take another look at the minutes and come back at the next meeting and prove them then.
I would agree.
So I'll make a motion to pull item 3A and continue that to May 7th and then to approve item, consent items 3B, C, and D.
Second.
So that has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed or abstained? So that passes unanimously, I believe. Okay, so then we'll move on to recognitions and presentations. So this is the portion of the meeting where we get to recognize some of our students in our community for doing the right thing. And for this month, the Do the Right Thing character trait we're recognizing is integrity. And I have here, I carry this with me now, the little pamphlet that talks about the Do the Right Thing program. So I want to read just the three bullet points as to what having integrity means. So it says here, being reliable, doing what I say I will do, building a good reputation, telling the truth even when it's not easy. So I want to get up here. We have some, if I could, we could start with the elementary student, elementary school students. And if I could have, I believe principal is here, or is it a teacher that's here?
Both.
Both, okay, perfect. And then if I could have Skye Orr and Joseph DeScalzo up here, please.
Come here, face this way. There you go. Okay. Mrs. Kissinger, I'm the principal, and this is the fourth grade teacher, Mrs. Karkamo, who is going to tell us about these awesome students.
Thank you. I want to start just by saying that being recognized for integrity is a big deal, and it's my honor to present this award to both of you. Now, Joseph, your teacher, Ms. Baker, couldn't be here tonight because she had a previous engagement that she had to go to, but she typed out exactly what she wanted me to say on your behalf, okay? All right. She says that Room 36 is filled with students who demonstrate the character trait integrity on a regular basis. The students are honest with the teacher, with each other, and with themselves. That being said, one student stands out above the rest for his consistency in demonstrating this trait. Joseph DeScalzo was new to MDE this fall. He worked diligently to learn the new rules and routines of both the classroom and the school so he could follow them. Joseph has done an admirable job all year demonstrating integrity and honesty, always making sure he's done the right thing even when no one is looking. Congratulations.
You're welcome.
And Skye Orr is a member of my classroom. And similar to Ms. Baker, I have many students who display integrity. However, one student stands out. There are lots of complimentary things that I could say about Skye, but if I'm limiting myself to the trait of integrity, what comes to mind is Skye's strong moral compass. Skye's honest, he'll stand up for what he believes is right, he's not easily swayed, he doesn't succumb to peer pressure because he's steadfast in his convictions. For this reason, I congratulate Skye for winning the Integrity Award.
Great, thank you very much. So we'll call you all up in a moment when we have done with everyone. So then next is Diablo View Middle School. I believe I saw Mrs. Banister here, our principal, and then Madison McPherson and Mackenzie McPherson.
Who's going to be? Yeah, there we go.
So Madison and Mackenzie are twins, and what I can say, Mrs. Cherokee's going to say a little bit more about these girls, but what I have to say is lots of times, students doing the right thing sometimes get overlooked. Sometimes I see the ones not doing the right thing more than that, but these two young ladies exemplify the character of integrity. They're honest, and we can always expect that they're going to be doing the right thing. But Ms. Cherokee has some more.
Yeah, I just want to tell a little bit about why I chose these two. Every spring I get, I'm lucky to bring eighth graders to the East Coast for a DC and New York trip, and these two were with me. And I don't know if you girls, I'm sure, I don't know if you remember this or not, but we were having lunch in this open mall setting, and there was a girl who was having a hard time. She didn't have anybody to eat lunch with, and she was kind of wandering around. And so I look out of the Cormian, and I see these two at a table with some other girls. So I immediately went over and I said, hey, girls, I'm going to bring so-and-so over to eat lunch with you. Didn't bat an eye. They said, of course. They started moving their stuff around, even while others were at the table, were kind of like, you could tell weren't really as into it as these two were. Didn't bat an eye though, so I brought the girl over, sat her down. I was walking away, and I could hear the conversation start, an organic conversation. I was walking away, and one of you two said, what'd you get to eat? Oh, I had that yesterday. That's really good. And so just a conversation that I didn't ask them to have, they just had it on their own. So that is integrity. That's doing the right thing even when no one's watching. So I'm proud of your girls, so.
And then last but not least, we have Clayton Valley Charter High School. I believe we have Mr. Morones here, who's the Director of Administrative Services. And if I could also have Stefan Jones and Cole Murphy up here, please.
I'd like to present to you Cole Murphy in terms of his exhibition and his character of integrity at Clayton Valley Charter High School. We have just under 2,300 students, so being selected for this recognition is quite an honor. Cole was selected from our guidance team as one of the students who carries himself in a mature manner. He is a freshman. He is an outstanding individual who consistently works to do right by himself and others. He is thoughtful in his approach to situations, and he takes ownership of his actions and his work effort in and out of the classroom. Throughout the school year, Cole has demonstrated his ability to manage and rise above the challenges of being a freshman on a large comprehensive campus. He has asked for support from his teachers and counselors when needed it. Cole has struggled in one of his classes all year, but he has continued to make an intentional effort in that class from his own learning. He does not make excuses for himself. He owns it. And he continues to work on improving himself by working through barriers with teachers and school staff. Outside of school, Cole has already taken on a part-time job and attends to attend the police cadet program this summer. He is a highly motivated individual that leads to his actions, and the respect he carries for himself and others is unbelievable. It is a pleasure to have students like Cole at Clayton Valley Charter High School. Congratulations, Cole.
So why don't we have all of you come up here? I think we want to take a group photo as well.
Squeeze in. Has to go on the website. Get in there tight. Hold your, hold your page up so we can actually read your name. There you go. Great, thanks.
Great, thank you. And let's give him one more round of applause.
You can tell the Mackenzie girls are twins because they turn red at exactly the same time.
So next up, I think summer is coming because it's going to be the kickoff for Clayton's Certified Farmers Market for 2019 with opening day of this Saturday, May 11th. And I believe we have the Regional Manager for Pacific Coast Farmers Market Association, Sean Lipetsky here to give a quick intro.
Hello, Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for your time tonight. I just want to say thank you very much for this opportunity again to have your farmers' market in your community. Let your junior, Chong, he'll be the operations manager for the farmers' market this year, and I'll present a slide for you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, council member. It is that time of the year again for the summer Clayton markets to open again. And again, the market is open this Saturday, May 11. Here's our directions for the 2019. Again, we will have a farmer's contract through the PFMA to run the farmers' market, to be the onsite eyes and ear of the market. And anything that happened at the market is to contact the onsite farmers, who will then contact directly to one of the staff member. For the 2019 producer, on the agriculture producer, we'll have Hanson Family Farms, who will bring in pork, lambs, and beef. We had Chase Farms, who brings in vegetables and strawberry. We also have GNS Corn from Brentwood that will bring summer corns. We'll have Catali Farms, who's from the Central Valley, will bring in cherries. We have Nogjabat Farms, also from the Central Valley, will bring in nuts, flavored nuts also. And we have Resentist Farm will be bringing in stone fruits for the seasons. For the non-agriculture producer, we'll have Rosef Bakery, who will bring pastry, pies, and bread. Upper Crutch Bakery will bring in artisan bread. We'll also be partnering with local, with the cross-promoting, with the concert in the park with flyers and passing out fruits to customer. Will be also possibly be partnering with the Derby Days and Rib Cookoaks for more promotions. Also, the Clayton Garden Club plant sale collaborations. For our marketing and promotional activity outreach, we'll be advertising in the Conquer Clayton Pioneer Monthly Newspaper articles and advertise. Also, East Bay Towns article, Diablo Gazette article, Claycore online ads that will be run on June, and then our monthly email that we send out to our customer who sign in on our email list. And then we also will be doing a contest, and it'll win to either the giveaway carry cash or do to business. And within our social media, we have Facebook follower of 819 followers and then 750 likes. And out of the review, we have 4.8 of reviews about the market. And according to our up-to-date, we have about 633 email that we have sent out, a newsletter on a monthly issue. Our goal is to increase community involvement and to increase the crowd count at the market, and to have the local business involvement, and to adding new producer with specialty products to our market, to grow the market. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. So I mean, can you remind us again, so it's every Saturday, and the hours are what, and what's the location?
It is every Saturday, 9 to 1, and it is at the Kinder Care Parking Lot.
Perfect. Any questions? Councilmember Diaz.
Yeah. Over the past years, you've always had great presentations of vegetables and fruits. Do you plan on having a bakery vendor this year, and also someone that will maybe even provide some hot sandwiches or things like that, which they've done in the past?
Yeah, we're looking into possibly putting in one or two more hot food. Plus, we already on reserve right now with two bakery. And then possibly, like we say, more of the farmer also with specialty products.
Any other comments? Great, thank you. And I think I would also mention, I think you're looking at partnering some of the local events when you have people in town. I would note that on June 29th and 30th, that's when one of the local swim teams has about 1,000 people in Dana Hills during the pentathlon weekend, so that may be another opportunity to do something when you have a lot of people in town. But thank you very much, and I hope our, hope our citizens visit often and frequently.
Yeah, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. So next up, we'll move on to our reports. We do not have a Planning Commission or Trails and Landscaping Committee report, but we perhaps have a report from the city manager and staff. Mr. Napper.
Thank you, Mayor Catalano, members of the council. Just for housekeeping, parents, if you have students and they need to take you home, you're welcome to leave at this time. It only gets more interesting from here. I have one item for the city council and as well as the public. Each year, when the census is not actually taken, the California Department of Finance does a calculation of the population estimates for each city and the counties that are in California. They do this from a methodology of birth rates, attritions, death rates, and then also housing, new housing starts, and they figure a factor of number of family members in each housing. We just received these this week. The estimates are important. You can see where Clayton is highlighted. Somewhere, we gained a net 22 people, and we're going to create a scavenger hunt for you to go find them. But actually, it was one of the smallest growing, 0.2%. And the information is useful for each city because many of the city's subventions and grant programs are based upon the number of heads in each of the city. So for instance, today I just signed a, an application indicating that our city was interested in its per capita allocation program from a new parks bond that was adopted by the voters in 2018. So it's kind of interesting. You can see the largest city in terms of percentage growth was the city of Oakley. We're down near, well, excuse me, Brentwood, and then it was the city of Oakley. We're down near the bottom of a 0.2%. And we'll put that information up on the website. It's just kind of, there are people who like to see where everyone's moving about. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Mr. Napper. Then we'll bring up to the city council for any reports from regional committees, commissions, and boards. Let's start with Councilmember Juan.
You surprised me.
Sorry.
So I think it's been about three weeks since we last met. In that time, we had the Budget Subcommittee meet to review the proposed FY20 budget, the Clayton Cleans Up event. I was able to walk downtown with my children, and they had a lot of fun. I met with both the principals of Mount Diablo Elementary and Diablo View, and I've invited them to this meeting. And I did prepare the draft letter regarding the cost compact that we had discussed at the last meeting, and that is on the agenda today.
Okay, Vice Mayor Pierce.
Thank you. On April 17th, right after our last meeting, I appeared before the Contracosta LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission. They wanted a presentation on the outcome of the CASA process and where we're going with the legislation. So along with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission staff, we made a presentation to them. That evening, we had a meeting of the Contracosta Transportation Authority. On the 18th, I chaired a meeting of the Housing Legislation Working Group, which is a joint committee formed by MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and the Association of Bay Area Governments, to address the housing legislation in Sacramento and to give feedback to that. That committee is not making any votes or a single recommendation. They are taking comments from everyone and forwarding comments, ideas, suggestions to both MTC and ABAG for their legislative committees for when they consider those later this week on Friday. And we have had five meetings of that committee so far, and most of those meetings went longer than the time allowed. Our last meeting last Thursday went for four hours and was incredibly thoughtful and creative and collaborative. And so we're, we're looking forward to continuing to meet periodically to talk about these kinds of issues. So we had that meeting on Thursday, the 22nd. No, it wasn't Thursday, the 22nd. It was on the 22nd. That must have been Monday. Tuesday, the 23rd, we had a meeting in downtown Clayton to celebrate St. George's Day in Bucksworth, England, which is our twin city, for those who are unaware that we have a twin city, in the town where Joel Clayton was born and grew up. And so the founder of our town, we have honored their city. We are twinned with them. That's what they call it in England. And St. George's Day is a big day for them, so we met and raised a glass to Bucksworth, England, to celebrate them. They, incidentally, fly the American flag on the 4th of July and on March 18th, which is the incorporation date for the city of Clayton and several other times during the year. So they thought we weren't showing enough respect for them. So we celebrated St. George's Day with a, with a glass of something special. So that was fun. On the 24th, I tuned in to the SB 50 and SB 4 hearing that was held in the legislature. Many of our colleagues were there in person for the League of California Cities Legislative Action Day and was able to hear the changes that were proposed to be made. And we only just this last week finally saw those changes in print. There are some differences that evolved into that. On the 25th, we had another meeting of the Housing Legislative Working Group. On the 27th and 28th, I was part of the Art and Wine Festival, feeding about 130 vendors a breakfast. So we keep our vendors happy. And by the way, that Art and Wine Festival appears to have cleared more money than ever before. A real record-setting attendance. So it was a beautiful weekend, and that money will go back into the community. So that's great. On the 1st of May, I attended the Regional Planning Committee meeting, which is a Subcommittee of the Association of Bay Area Governments. And we reviewed the, what they're calling the Horizons Planning Issue Papers. This goes into the putting together of the every four years Plan Bay Area 2050. And so this is one of the issue papers that will go into that document. So we reviewed a lot of statistics about growth and how we can manage that better. And on May 2nd, I attended the Contracosta Transportation Authority's Administrative and Projects Committee, which I chair, and we approved some funding for some very critical projects in the county. That evening, I attended the mayor's conference, and I was reappointed at that meeting to serve as the mayor's conference representative to the Association of Bay Area Governments. And then on Friday, the 3rd, and Saturday, the 4th, the Clayton Historic Society held their fundraiser, their largest fundraiser of the year, which is the Clayton Gardens Tour. And it was a beautiful weekend, and we made, as the treasurer said, enough money to pay the utility bills for the year. So when you're a small group, that's a big deal. So that's it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Wolf.
Okay, well, my, my list isn't quite as long as the vice mayor's. I attended the Library Foundation meeting since the last meeting that we had. Also attended Clayton Cleans Up and served many hamburgers, cheeseburgers, and veggie burgers, and hot dogs there, along with cleaning up.
Yep.
Attended the East Bay Habitat Conservancy, Conservancy meeting in the mayor's stead. I also met with members of staff, also had constituent emails to deal with, and also met with a couple of constituents in person. And I also attended the mayor's conference a couple of days ago. That's it for me.
Councilmember Diaz.
Thank you. Well, it was a busy couple of weeks for me. Started off on Good Friday, attended the 30th Annual Valley Leadership Prayer Breakfast. That's a group of all leadership of the greater Contracosta area, get together once a year at, on Good Friday, and have a prayer breakfast, well-attended, probably 400 people in attendance that day. Then on the next day, Saturday, participated in the Clayton Cleans Up. The hamburgers that this gentleman was serving, I was barbecuing.
That's right.
So I was out there, and I had never really done that because that was traditionally a Howard Gallagher position, but I succeeded in taking over that role. But we had a good turnout. 100-plus, 150-plus people came out, and they picked up so much trash and other things around the city that was overlooked. On Monday, the 23rd, I attended with Councilman Juan the Budget Subcommittee meeting, and I want to compliment, compliment, or compliment Councilmember Juan on his knowledge of financial matters, and I know that that's his profession, but he did a great job in taking us through that, that event with, with our finance manager and city manager. Attended the CBCA General Membership Meeting on the 25th. Then on the 26th through the 27th, or 28th, rather, we did the Art and Wine Festival. And I want to particularly add on the fact that Council, or Vice Mayor Pierce mentioned, this was this was an exceptional producing event. There was a lot of concern about the timing and so forth, but it was probably, it outpaced all of the past Art and Wine Festivals that we've had. I also want to make note that we opened the event on Saturday morning. We had a special treat. We had the Clayton Valley Charter High School Choir, who had just returned from New York, where they won three gold medals for their performances. And I want to tell you, the talent that is resident in that charter high school, for those young people, both boys and girls, singing, performing, it was absolutely incredible to have them open up the Art and Wine Festival on that Saturday morning. Very good. Then, on the 1st and the 2nd, I went up to the beautiful State Capitol, which I get invited every once in a while, and I participated over two days. We redid and rewrote the professional license examination for the security professionals in the state of California. Anybody that would like to enter that industry has to pass, like CPAs, like physicians, so forth. They have to take a professional examination, and I participated in a two-day event updating the examination to the current law and preparing new questions to be added to the test. On the 5th, Cinco de Mayo, I made my usual Sunday trip down to Regency Drive, and it was relatively light, but even though there wasn't the decoy car there, the Clayton Police attended to people that were parking in the red and were dutifully cited for that infraction. So, want to compliment them that they're continuing to oversee that and do that on a regular basis. Then, on, I guess, this Saturday, is the, not only is the farmer's market starting, but that's our first Concerts in the Grove, a Boston tribute, CEO out there on Saturday, 6:00 PM.
Great. Thank you. And then, a couple items for me. Unfortunately, I missed Clayton Cleans Up. I had to attend a funeral out of the country, but sounds like it was a success. But right as I came back the next day, and for a couple nights since our last meeting, I am part of the CBCA Scholarship Committee, so spent a couple evenings in the last few weeks interviewing about 20 candidates. These are seniors graduating from high school, and specifically seniors who live in Clayton. Then, on Friday, April 26th, I got to participate in the Mount Diablo Elementary School Field of Dreams opening ceremony. I was asked to speak a few words, and then I also got to present a proclamation declaring April 26, 2019, as the Mount Diablo Elementary Field of Dreams Day in Clayton. And I want to mention just a few words because it's such a remarkable effort, and I think there was a trio of people who really kind of set this thing in motion, and I see one person here today as well, but it was Depro Gonzalez, Pat Mittendorf, and Michelle Hill, who really put that effort together. And it's really a remarkable effort in just more than two years. Not only did they fundraise it, but it also got constructed, and the field looks awesome. So, what an awesome community effort. Absolutely. And then, on April 27 and 28, Saturday and Sunday, attended the Art and Wine Festival as well, helped out with the volunteers, and I think I saw all of us there. So, 100% attendance is always good from the council. Did I not see you there? Okay. Never mind. Almost. Then, on Thursday, May 2nd, also attended the Mayor's Conference in Lafayette. Last Saturday morning, held Mayor's Office Hours at Clayton Couple Joes. And then, also, just for fun, attended the Clayton Garden Tour as well. So, I think that's it. So, I think that takes us through all of our reports. I don't have any other items, so we'll move on to public comment, item six, which is the portion of the meeting when any member of the public can comment on any item that's not on today's agenda. I do have one speaker card, but if anybody else would like to address the council, please just feel free to come up. I'll call Ms. Stanaway first. Please.
Ann Stanaway, 1553 Haviland Place, Clayton. Recently, without explanation, the city manager sent me some ad hoc letter signed by a Contra Costa Fire Protection District Fire Chief about red curbs. I demand to know the rationale behind forwarding this communique to me. My complaints focus on the abrogation of Clayton's duty to the public safety to enforce standards articulated and effective since at least 1976 in Section 13.208 of the California Fire Code mandating maintenance of an unobstructed public roadway, a minimum of 20 feet in width in to every structure within the state. Said unobstructed roadway dedicated as a fire apparatus access road, otherwise known as a fire lane. Further, the Fire Code goes on to specify that Fire Chief's authority over changes to fire lane configuration shall be limited to increasing roadway minimum width as measured, quote, "exclusive of shoulders," unquote. Frankly, I do not care whether the city paints Haviland Court's curbs pink with green polka dots. Just keep the width and turnarounds of this and all roadways unobstructed, 24 by 7, in fulfillment of the city's obligations to public safety under state code, California Vehicle Code 22500, and City Ordinance 10.36.040, and 10.36.041. Give Clayton the tools to enforce. Still, reports of continuing violations appear to fall on deaf ears. When the city decides to abandon or engage in selective enforcement of its own ordinances and/or ignore city, ignore state law, please have the decency to notify the Clayton residents so that we, the people, may pursue appropriate remedies. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council on any non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Mr. Napper, would you like to?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Stanaway's been coming to the City Council, I think, for a couple of years now, and the comments seem to be, you know, fairly the same. And so, I think it's probably informative for the public to know exactly what we're talking about and is the reason for the letter that I asked the Fire Chief, which is a special fire district, to send to her. This is a picture from afar away of the court in Westwood. This is Haviland Court. It has, I think, probably four houses on either side. This angle was taken because this is the nearest fire hydrant. And what I was speaking with the Fire Chief about was, notwithstanding Ms. Stanaway's points of view, and also recitations of, you know, various laws, all of the streets in Westwood, it's, Westwood was constructed as a planned unit development. All of the streets in Westwood are too narrow to allow on-street parking. So, there are already signs throughout that subdivision which indicates that one cannot park on the street. In my discussions with the Fire Chief, I've indicated, does that not also duly function as a fire access lane without the signage? And he said yes. And then, my question to him was, in regards to Haviland Court, which I don't, I don't believe Ms. Stanaway lives on, but in regards to this court, how would he deploy the appropriate fire apparatus to go there? He indicated to me that they would go to the nearest fire hydrant, which is right here. You can see the end of the court down at the, at the end, and this is where they would hook up for their additional water, as opposed to just keeping it in the apparatus. Then, they would go down that street as far as the conflagration or the fire might occur. Emergency medical individuals would respond as well. This is another, a closer view of Haviland Court. One of the predicaments of when Westwood subdivision was developed was that not only were, are the streets narrow, but the driveways are extremely short. And Vice Mayor Pierce, Westwood was constructed in what year?
1983 and '84.
1983 and '84. And what undoubtedly has happened during this time period is that vehicles, particularly SUVs and trucks, have gotten larger for the garage's interior as well as the exterior. And you can see on the right, there is, and I think that might be a Subaru SUV, I'm not certain, but you can see, actually, with a smaller SUV, and that car is parked almost up near the garage door, the back end of that tips over past the horizontal edge of the rolled curb. With this particular case, you can see that emergency vehicles, whether they be emergency medical or fire apparatus, can go down that road. This is the particular matter that Ms. Stanaway has, you know, consistently talked to the City Council about and has extrapolated that in various conversations before the council to indicate that Clayton doesn't care about the safety of its community. This is the predicament. The predicament is that truck is larger than not only the garage, but it's also longer with the bed than the street. However, there's still enough room for emergency medical apparatus to go through, and if there's a fire on one of the houses down near the end, the fire truck will go as far as it can go, and it's not unusual, because I, in other cities, I had paid fire. They will hook up their fire hoses, and they will go the rest of the way to fight the fire. So, what we are asking, and, you know, the fire district about, and they said yes. What they would do is they would not, they don't use the end to turn around. They would head in, and then they would back out. And whether it be emergency medical apparatus, like I indicated, an ambulance, or whether it's a larger truck, the fire apparatus, they can still attend to whether it be a fire or emergency medical service responses. So, we're trying to, in terms of a city, what we understand, at least right now, is there's no one on the street that has difficulty with this particular arrangement. They understand clearly that fire apparatus can't attend to a fire on this particular street. So, that's the reason for the letter, and she asked, she demands to know, so that's the reason for the letter that I was sent. I wanted the fire district's explanation as to how they would do and what's their feeling, and their answer is because it's a 20-foot width, they are already feel safe enough that they can get their emergency apparatus down the street. That's it.
Great. Thank you. And I guess that letter, so that specifically confirmed that the PUD appears to be in compliance with the minimum street width requirements and that there's no additional signage or curb painting that would be necessary?
Yeah. They said, since it functions already with no parking on the street, that it fits that purpose. Now, what Ms. Stanaway's point of view is, she's saying technically, the back of that truck is an obstruction into a fire access lane. What we're working with the fire district on, and what they have confirmed with us, is that in practical deployment application purposes, they can still attend to any fire safety or emergency medical response.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Vice Mayor Pierce.
Just one other clarification. The streets are 24 feet wide, and were specifically called out by the fire department as safe at 24 feet. So, if they need a minimum of 20 feet by state code, it's not overlapping more than four feet, so it's still fine.
Great. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. I didn't see any, no parking signs there anywhere in the pictures. I might have missed it, but are they, is it, as soon as you come in, I don't know Westwood, but as soon as you come in, it says?
At the entrance.
They're at the entrances.
I see.
Yeah. And, you know, vehicles are actually cited for parking on the street, as Ms. Stanaway has reported them on a couple of occasions, and our police department has gone out and ticketed them accordingly.
Thank you.
For parking on the street.
Great. Thank you. So, we'll move on to our next item, which is our public hearings. Item 7A, which is a public hearing to consider the adoption of City Initiated Urgency Ordinance Number 486 to introduction and first reading of City Initiated Ordinance Number 487, and adoption of a resolution establishing local design regulations and standards for the installation of small cell wireless antenna, 5G, in the public rights of way in Clayton. And I believe we have a report from Mr. Waltering.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Cattolano, and members of the City Council. This report introduces an urgency ordinance, a regular ordinance, and a resolution to provide the regulatory framework and standards for the installation of wireless facilities within the city of Clayton's public rights of way. Adoption of the urgency ordinance, which will require a four-fifths vote, along with the adoption of the resolution in your package, will enable the city to immediately have local permitting regulations and standards in place for applications to install or modify wireless facilities in the city's public rights of way. The accompanying regular ordinance will require a second reading prior to formal adoption and will become effective 30 days later. Why are we suggesting such a process? Why are we suggesting that you consider this evening adopting an urgency ordinance and an accompanying resolution while at the same time processing a standard ordinance for installation of wireless facilities in the city's public rights of way? I'd like to provide some background and context for why we're proposing this this evening. As many of you know, you probably all know, the wireless industry is experiencing a tremendous demand for increased capacity. As we look at how people are using video and live streaming and very much enjoying that technology, and that technology is expanding exponentially, the wireless carriers are being asked to provide for more capacity, and they're looking at ways to address this demand. What we've noticed over time is that wireless carriers are providing facilities more and more often in our public rights of way, on utility poles, streetlights, and new poles in the ROW. This trend is continuing and expected to expand. To address this increased demand, the industry is rolling out its fifth generation, its 5G technology. It's expected, over the next decade, that there'll be an investment of about $275 billion in this new technology. What's this technology like? It's small cell. It's highly distributed. Good locations for this type of technology are within our public rights of way. The Federal Communications Commission, the FCC, in September of 2018 issued a declaratory order and regulations referred to as September 2019 order, sorry, September 2018 order, that really relaxed standards for placement of small cell wireless facilities in public rights of way. And really, in some, in some ways preempted local agencies from being able to regulate wireless carriers as they have in the past, looking at a number of ways of trying to really forward this technology, the deployment of 5G technology. Mandatory timeframes. There was a concern among people in the industry that local agencies were taking way too long to process their applications. The order indicates that there are now shot clocks, that a local agency needs to process an application for an existing facility within 60 days, and for a new facility, within 90 days. And that fees, fees must be reasonable and consistent with other fees or charges that would be applied to similar installations. And that local jurisdictions need to be thoughtful, careful, and objective about aesthetic requirements. They cannot be burdensome. And with respect to health impacts, the FCC has provided thresholds, radio frequency, RF emissions standards, or thresholds, that local agencies need to work with and assure that applicants meet those standards. But local agencies cannot, cannot establish their own RF emission standards or thresholds. They can, and in the work our staff has done, we lay out a process where we would assure that applicants would submit studies that would be peer-reviewed, and then upon the activation of a small cell facility, that facility would be tested to make sure that those federal standards are complied with. those federal standards are complied with. Put those circumstances together with what we have in place currently in Clayton. Currently in Clayton, like most communities, we require encroachment permits to do work in the public rights of way. But given the large number of small cell wireless facilities that we would expect to be placed, or requested to be placed, with the support of FCC regulations in our public rights of way, our current encroachment permit is inadequate to address the unique aesthetic, safety, operational, and locational issues and concerns that even with the FCC regulations, the city of Clayton can, with its own local ordinance and design and development standards, provide guidance and regulation. That's what we have before you tonight. We have a package of ordinances and a resolution that spells out design and development standards to put Clayton in a better position to address the upcoming deployment of 5G technology here in this city and more broadly. In your package, there is the urgency ordinance and similar, the standard ordinance, and then the design and development standards. They work together. The ordinance, the men's Title 12 of the municipal code, add Chapter 12.05, wireless facilities in the public rights of way. The ordinance spells out the regulations and permitting and review process. It looks at administration, application requirements, it looks at fees. It requires that the city adopt design and development standards. The ordinance also spells out very clearly our local concern about making sure that the RF emission standards adopted by the federal government are indeed met in this community, that with applications and as part of application completeness, an RF study will be required, it will be peer-reviewed by a qualified professional. As I indicated earlier, when the facility is actually installed, before going fully operational, there'll be a test to make sure it does indeed meet standards. And there will be noticing requirements. So as spelled out in the ordinance, part of the application, a complete application, is not just providing information regarding the design of the small cell wireless and its location, but also to notify property owners in the vicinity that could be impacted by the placement of this facility. In tandem is the resolution. As I mentioned, the ordinance actually calls for the adoption of this resolution. The resolution is set up that way as a resolution because we're looking at design and development standards. They could change over time. FCC regulations could change. It's easier to amend a resolution than to amend an ordinance. So the intent is to continue to work with the community, the carriers, and to abide by current regulations, FCC and state regulations, and update the resolution as necessary to make sure it's current and protects interests of the community. You'll notice in the resolution that there are provisions that address maximum height. For example, standard, the pole standard would be 30 feet, and then there could be the installation of a wireless facility on top of that approximately seven feet in addition. There's a preference to use existing poles. There's a requirement that the installation of the wireless facilities, that they're colored, painted in a manner that blends with the pole or the structure they're attached to, and that the materials likewise are compatible. So again, height, size, stealthing, colors, materials, preference for existing poles. Looking at location, to make sure that the location doesn't interfere with path of travel, ADA access, or site distance. All of those are very important and are spelled out in the design standards. Staff is continuing to work on other aspects of this program. It is a program. Staff is continuing to work on a master license agreement between the city and a carrier for use of a city-owned facility, a master license agreement in terms of what would the charge be for the ongoing use of that facility. Spelled out in the ordinance is the requirement for an application process, and staff will be working to develop thorough and complete application forms, and again, things like the RF study, the radio frequency study, notification to those people who could be impacted. What kind of information do we need will all be in the application form. The application itself will be called a wireless encroachment permit. The staff person that would be coordinating, but we all work together, but coordinating this program would be the city engineer, but other departments, community development, maintenance, and other departments certainly would be involved. We did receive, and you have copies of this at the dais, I think you received these copies directly from the law firm of McKenzie and Alberton LLP. Received this comment letter this morning on this application, this city-initiated application. The law firm was engaged by Verizon Wireless, and these are comments regarding the materials in front of you tonight, the urgency ordinance and the resolution, the design and development standards resolution. Our staff, our city attorney's office, myself, we sat down, we reviewed this document thoroughly. They have certain interpretations here and make suggestions in terms of perhaps some revisions to conform with the FCC order and also state law. We too have looked at the package before you, the ordinances and the resolution, and we actually find that their interpretations, our interpretations, we believe the package we've put before you is consistent with FCC regulations, is consistent with state law. And we would continue this evening to go forward and be recommending approval of the package before you. So our recommendation, following opening the public hearing and receiving public comments, is that you go forward tonight and adopt the city-initiated urgency ordinance number Conduct introduction, first reading of city-initiated ordinance number 487, and adopt the resolution in your package, the design and development standards resolution in your package, and then follow the more detailed description of actions in the agenda report. In terms of fiscal impact, staff is recommending that the matter be handled by way of cost recovery. So the applications we expect would be handled by deposit accounts, there would be cost recovery. We do not anticipate a fiscal impact to the city. In terms of SEQA, this is not a project, this is a program, it's not a project under SEQA. Subsequent individual applications would be projects as carriers would be proposing the installation of specific facilities. We believe that in most cases, those would likely be exempt under stated exemptions in the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, SEQA guidelines document, as described in the staff report. So with that, that concludes my report this evening. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. We have the city attorney here tonight. We also have Andrew McCartell, who's also from the city attorney's office, and all three of us would be happy to respond to your questions or points of clarification. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Are there any clarification questions from staff? Councilmember Diaz?
The language, I know, is rather complex, but to get things in practical perspective, right now, don't we only have one wireless transmitting device in the city, and that's residing over at the AT&amp;T Switching Center on Marsh Creek? There are no other antennas? Because what I'm interested in, what is the technology look like? You're saying it's a small cell. What does that mean? And do we have examples somewhere that we can at least reference and take a look at?
Sure, I'd be happy to respond to your question. The small cell, and I'll refer to it as a distributed network, is quite different than what you see today, where we have the cellular towers oftentimes on private property. This would be a very different type of network, where to provide the capacity that is anticipated based on the video and live streaming, and also daily, there are new products and devices being introduced in the marketplace that are connected to the internet and in need of wireless technology. These facilities would be placed on light poles, other standards, light standards within the community. The dispersal, it's hard to know for sure at this point, but in terms of providing the sort of capacity that's anticipated, these could be within 1,000 feet of each other, that sort of thing. So small cell wireless, maybe seven feet or so in height, attached to poles, distributed within the public right of way throughout communities, to give you a general sense. That is a general sense.
Well, the reason why I ask this question is that once in my life, I worked for AT&amp;T when we were first developing the cellular system and putting it in place down in Southern California, the most, the largest objection was to the cell towers themselves. In fact, it created a second industry where they masked them, they looked like trees, and you can see one over on Ignatio Valley, up on the hill up there. So I guess what I'm kind of trying to envision, are we going to have a proliferation of antennas throughout the city that would be objectionable?
The objective really with this ordinance and the design and development standards is to really address that very comment, is to understand that the 5G technology deployment is coming, and it's likely to be placed in the public rights of way to a large extent, and to put in place design and development standards and review processes that address those concerns. So things like trying to address how high, what volume, method of attachment, not blocking paths of travel, site distance, making sure that they're painted or of a color that blends with the structure that they're attached to, making sure that the materials are consistent with the materials that they're attached to, looking at locational compatibility characteristics in trying to make sure that from one neighborhood to another, case by case, area by area, there's an application procedure and review process to assure, to the extent possible, compatibility and minimize aesthetic and visual impacts. In the context, I mean, here's the context, in the context of the FCC order and regulations, really indicating that there's strong support for this technology and its deployment throughout the country. And so we're working in that context.
And I gather that, and I understand that Verizon is the main driver in this 5G technology at this point, but I would certainly like to see some example of what these devices look like before we start finding them popping up all over the, all over the city at some point. That's my real question.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf?
My question, I guess, is about the strand-mounted facilities, because what I've seen of this technology is a lot of it is strand-mounted. It's already existing poles, interline, if you will, boxes built into the ordinary line that's already there, excuse me. And so if, my concern would be that we would create an ordinance that would be so restrictive that 5G technology wouldn't come to Clayton at all. And we certainly, those of us that are out here, we can't get AT&amp;T U-verse out here, you know? So, and I've heard it, people have sent me emails regarding this, why do we have only one TV provider that can get high-speed internet out here, that kind of thing. So I would, I'd be careful that we wouldn't stop progress of 5G technology if it's going to come to Clayton. And what about the inner strand facility where it's already on an existing pole? In fact, in this letter, they mention cable splice units for other apparatus suspended between poles. If that's already existing, why would we not allow that to continue or to come to Clayton in that respect? I mean, why would we have to paint that a different color or, you know, it wouldn't cause any more blight than is already existing?
The intent really is to try to make sure, to the extent possible, that the new facilities blend in are less obtrusive. And again, this is before you for your feedback, your direction, your action. So if there are aspects of what we have in the ordinance or in the design and development standards that you're concerned about, we could certainly discuss those and perhaps make some modifications, but with respect to the braided sort of facilities that you're talking about, the idea was to try to reduce visual impact, essentially. But at the same time, the intent here is to comply with the FCC order and to support, to support 5G coming to Clayton in a way that both satisfies federal regulations but also attempts to protect local community interests.
Thank you. I agree with Councilman Diaz that I'd like to see some of this technology and certainly have the public get a chance to see this as well.
Okay. Councilmember Juan?
So to address, I think, a question you had, I think the definition of what the small cell wireless is, what it is and how big it is, is defined in the Code of Federal Register. It's listed here, it's Section 16,002.1, and it defines antenna and the associated boxes associated with it, with the cubic feet measurement. So if you search for images, you could see it, they're something like 27 cubic feet for the boxes, and the actual antenna is smaller. I just had a couple of questions about the ordinance that was drafted. On section, so I'm going to refer to specific sections. Proposed Section 1205.06OB, this encourages pre-application meeting prior to filing an application. My question is, if this is deemed important or critical, why don't we make this mandatory? Why is it suggested? Is that, is there a reason for that?
I'd be happy to respond to that. We encourage, as staff, we strongly encourage pre-application meetings because our intent is to try to make sure when an application comes in, that it's complete as possible to expedite the actual processing of the application. So routinely, we encourage people to come in and we sit down with them and try to explain the requirements. In this particular case, our read of the regulations is that In this particular case, our read of the regulations is that requiring a pre-application process would be inconsistent with the regulations in that a requirement could be seen as a delay in terms of the concerns about processing these applications in a, in an expedited timeline. You notice the 60 days and 90 days I referred to earlier. We would typically, in a case like this, recommend to you that a pre-application process be a part of the application. We backed away from that. And we stated specifically, strongly encourage.
Okay, so that was intentional?
It was intentional, yes.
Sorry, if I may just jump in really quick. So, just to kind of clarify, a little additional point to it, in the FCC order, the September 2018 order, the FCC--
The 147-page document?
Yeah. It's very exciting, the whole thing. Yeah, the--
Are we good, Karen? Sorry, thank you. So in the FCC small cell order from the fall, September 2018, they said that if a local government requires this pre-application meeting, then the shot clock will start running at that meeting. I guess the theory is like if they proffer the application, then it starts. So, if it's voluntary, and it would be great if they come, and it would be helpful, it won't start the shot clock. But if the city requires it, then it'll start running and then makes things more difficult. That's the reasoning.
Kind of a trade-off?
Okay.
For the same section 1205.060, with the exception of Item B, all the sections in this Item A through E indicate mandatory actions. They talk about the applicant shall, no application fee shall, request for waiver shall, et cetera. But Item F is different. It says that for incomplete applications, the city engineer may notify the applicant in writing. My question is, is this intended to allow the city engineer to forego any response at all if the application is incomplete?
No. The intent is that the determination of completeness or incompleteness could be handled by way of a meeting, it could be handled verbally. The objective, the intent, would be to make sure that the applicant is informed of the status of the application, whether complete or incomplete.
Okay. I mean, for my, for my read, I would, I would like that to be shall.
That would be fine. Our intent really is to make sure that when we are ready with a determination, that that information is shared with the applicant, so.
Yeah, that's fine. Doesn't matter.
Let's do that.
I just think that the, you know, the, yeah, I just think that the determination of an incomplete application should be a required action, rather than something that doesn't have to happen. Because as it's written now, it just never has to happen.
So it could be by email, then?
Yeah, that's fine. Doesn't--
Just to make it quick.
Yeah.
Understood. So, shall would be fine.
Yeah. The other, the last question I had is that there's a requirement that the fees associated are reasonable, and that in the ordinance, we indicate that this will follow, talks something to the effect of this will follow our established fee schedule. So my question is, how, have we done a comparison of our established fee schedule with the safe harbor fees that were considered presumptively reasonable by FCC in their letter? Like, did we bump those against each other to see if it is close?
We did not do that. Our read of the fees, though, it says that the fees are to be reasonable and consistent with other fees charged for similar installations.
And then they also provide safe harbor fee amounts, though. So I would think that because they provided specific dollar amounts, and we already have a fee schedule established, it would behoove us to look at them to see if we fall within the safe harbor and then, you know--
So, the city can certainly, I guess, look into the reasonableness. But the plan, as David had kind of mentioned, is to do a deposit and then charge against that. The safe harbor amounts in the order were for instances in which there's an absence of a cost justification. But if the city has cost-based setup, like a deposit and pulling from there, then it would still kind of fall under the order and the instructions that the FCC gave.
Okay. I guess I did have one last question. One of the, one of the items that this law firm sent had to do with Public Utility Code 7901. And that, it's pretty short, it's like three sentences or something. And it says something like, utility companies like this could install poles and associated wiring with those poles and all the antecedent things that follow, essentially in all the right-of-ways. What is the functional limit of what can be installed under that PUC guidance? Because it seems like there's no restriction under that, but I imagine that there probably is restriction, but I just don't know what it is.
Right, right. Yeah, it's, I know that it's not super clear, but basically from 7901, Section 7901, the key, I guess, point for the city's perspective is that they cannot incommode the public use of the right-of-way. So that's where the city's--
Did you say incommode?
Incommode, not to incommode the public use.
All right, hold on, I gotta--
It's a lawyer term, obviously.
So, while you get there, that not only includes, so that's traditionally been thought of to definitely include like safety reasons. Also, through case law, it's been thought to include aesthetics. Recently, there was a California Supreme Court decision last month, basically affirming the fact that aesthetic considerations are included under, whether it incommodes the public use, which I think bolsters the city's authority a bit when you're dealing with 7901. So, the telephone companies and the telecom carriers do have a franchise or a franchise right to use the right-of-way, but it's not unfettered.
That's, okay. That's all I got for now. I have a number of things on this letter, but I don't know if we're going to talk about this letter in detail.
We can come back to in our comments when we bring, after a public hearing. Vice Mayor Perez, any questions?
Okay, do we want to, well, I have comments, I guess, more than anything, but I do have comments on some of the parts of the ordinance and parts of the standards that I'd like to adjust. And so maybe now's not the time to do it. I understand what's being proposed, I just have some suggestions.
I only have one question, so let me ask my question, then we'll open public hearing and then come back to it. So, I think one of the concerns is the size of the equipment. And now, this specific equipment is stuff that, you know, can be not only attached to light poles, and then also, and more particularly, on the ground. So literally, you're looking at boxes on the sidewalks and stuff like that. And I think some of it can be large, some of it can be heavy. And I think, you know, so this, this whole FCC order issue actually came up in the Transportation Communication Public Works Policy Committee that I attended for the California League of Cities a couple of months ago. And I think a lot of cities had concerns about how, to what extent they can regulate specifically the size and kind of the location. So, my question is, I understand that we can't include criteria that provides essentially for compatibility with the community character, that it has to be objective criteria for the most part. So I think one of the potential objective criteria is ADA compliance, so that you're not putting these big boxes on sidewalks and then, you know, you're prohibiting ADA paths and whatnot. And I see that our draft ordinance includes that, which is great. My other question has to do more with the, with the equipment that gets attached to light poles, and specifically about structural safety. Because to the extent that some of that equipment is heavy, and it can cause damage, so that the pole falls and something like that, how are we combating that? Are we, I didn't see anything in that. I saw the indemnification insurance requirements, but I didn't see anything specific about whether we asked the provider to provide that it's structurally safe, the equipment, when attached.
I'd like to respond to that. As far as the application requirements, there would be an application that would include structural information, structural calculations. And again, while the city engineer would be the coordinator of this process, the application would be referred out to various departments for plan review, plan check. And as applicable, there would be a need for structural calculations and for a review by, say, the building division to assure that the attachment meets safety requirements in terms of wind, seismic, et cetera.
Okay, so we're covering that?
Yes.
Yeah, perfect, okay. So let's then, I think that's all the questions. So let's then open the public hearing and receive any public comments. I don't have any speaker cards, but if there's anyone here who would like to address the council, please come up to the podium. Go ahead, and please just state your name and--
Chris Vegas with Verizon Wireless. I did complete a speaker card because I wasn't sure whether I needed one for this particular period. But I could certainly complete one for you if you'd like. So, Chris Vegas, I'm with Verizon Wireless, I'm community development for Verizon. I wanted to thank your city staff for preparing the documents that are before you for approval this evening. Unfortunately, it sounds like our positions are different from one another because we do see a lot of discrepancies between what is before you this evening and federal, as well as state law. And so I'm here today to request that you defer action on these items in order to give the city staff time to meet with our outside legal counsel so that we can further discuss these items that were in the letter that was sent over this morning. Additionally, I wanted to mention that I do have photos of sites that we've built. I have 4G and 5G photos that I'd be willing to share with you if you would like. And I can send those over now, and we could project them, and I can explain them to you. And then beyond that, as the urgency ordinance and ordinance read today, we would not be able to deploy 5G technology. And so, Councilmember Wolf, you explained that broadband service is an issue and that there's residents that have reached out because that's their only option. And so by allowing Verizon to bring 5G to the city of Clayton, we would be able to offer additional services beyond traditional broadband. So we recently signed a contract with Google and YouTube TV, and in cities where we have 5G services, our customers will be able to stream live TV as if they were watching traditional cable. So that's a service that your residents would not be able to have because we are unable to deploy 5G technology. So we're really interested in bringing not only 5G but 4G technology to your visitors and residents, and we're interested in entering into an agreement. I'm also happy to hear that the city is working on an MLA. And as soon as that is drafted, then if that can be sent over, if we could connect, then we would certainly like to set up a meeting with you so that we can provide some comment on that as well. Again, my name is Chris Vegas, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Perez.
Yeah, one of the questions I would have, and it's been something we've encountered in the past, the arterials would be relatively easy to address. We have some pretty hilly areas, some somewhat remote areas. And I'm not going to get into the merits of Verizon over any other carrier, but one of the concerns we've had in the past is that some carriers have not been willing to address the entire city so that every single residence has access. And that would be something that would be very, very important to me, to make sure that if there's any, then there's all.
Right.
And, and what has been proposed by other carriers in the past is sort of get the main spine down the middle of town and those a little too far away just get left out. And I'm not interested in anything like that. But I am very concerned about some of the things in here. I think there may be an agree to disagree on what the law says. I have to trust my city attorney to tell me that the interpretation that they are giving us as experts for the city are accurate. But, you know, it seems like it is, yes, something that needs to come at some point. I am concerned about boxes the size of refrigerator freezers. 28 cubic feet's pretty big. And I'm concerned about anything like that. Hopefully, that is only ground-mounted, and the smaller ones are up on telephone poles. But if there's anything that big on a telephone pole, I think my community would have a lot of problem with that. So, I guess those are more comments. But the curiosity is, is whether your or any other company is really interested in serving the entire community, because that's not been the case in the past.
Yeah, so we would be interested in serving the entire community. The issue is that a lot of jurisdictions do not currently allow for small cell facilities in residential areas. And so we're working with those specific jurisdictions to deploy in commercial areas in order to get residents comfortable with the fact that small cells are in their community, and they may be driving past them regularly and just unaware of the fact that they're there. And so, those are some of the techniques that we've used in other jurisdictions, and we can do that here. But we're certainly interested in covering the city as a whole, not specific areas.
That sounds like a phased approach that says we'll get the meat of it first, and if the rest looks feasible, we'll go after that. So, that, that looks a little like a cagey answer to me, but that's my impression.
And then, in regards to the 28 cubic feet, I think that what, what you may be talking about as well as what was discussed earlier with the 28 cubic feet, when we did deploy a larger design, it was because there was backup battery cabinets, and those were by the request of the jurisdiction. We're no longer deploying backup battery cabinets on the ground, so everything is on the pole.
And how big are those?
I don't have the exact dimensions, but I have, I do have photos that I could show you.
I think that would have to wait for another time. Okay, that's all the questions I have here.
So a couple of quick questions. If you look at the dais right there in front of you, the box, so like, you know, the ones that go on the ground, how would one compare to that box right there?
Well, we're not deploying anything on the ground right now. Everything is on the pole itself.
But this would allow those kind of, I mean, probably that size or even larger, right?
For 28 cubic feet?
Right.
28 cubic feet is the size of a refrigerator freezer.
Yeah, it's taller than I am, and it would be--
Well, no, that's three by, three by three, right? It's, 27 cubic feet is a three-by-three cube? Am I doing math correctly? I don't know.
You're asking the wrong people on math, I think. But, so, so one other question. So, you're asking for us not to take action on this tonight?
Correct.
So, are you saying that the way in which the proposed ordinance is drafted today, you would not be able to install any 5G?
Yes.
And why is that?
And that's because it's too restrictive. So the letter that we sent over does outline all of the specific points. Unfortunately, our outside legal counsel who drafted and sent the letter over is not here, so we can't go into the specifics about it. But we would be happy to set up a meeting with councils, well as staff, to go over that letter in further detail.
Well, can you give me one example, at least?
Yes.
As to what's so restrictive that would prohibit you from doing that?
So, one of the ones that I pointed out already is that there's restrictions in residential zones. And under California Public Utility Code, Section 7901, wireless carriers such as Verizon Wireless or telecommunications companies have access to the public right-of-way, and it doesn't distinguish, you know, a commercial zone in the right-of-way versus a right-of-way in the residential area.
So that's, but that would not cover, even if that's true, that would not cover the entire city you were talking about?
Right, that would be specific, yeah. So that's one example.
You could still install 5G equipment in the non-residential district.
In a commercial zone, right. But then you wouldn't--
Correct.
And so the thing about 5G is that it operates on millimeter wave, which has a shorter wavelength. And so we need more 5G antennas distributed throughout the city in order to ensure that all parts of the city are covered equally. So we would need it in residential areas.
Okay. So another objection I think you had is that the city can prohibit placement of ground cabinets, but I think you just mentioned a second ago that you're not installing those. So why the objection there?
We're trying to get it in line with the FCC order, so that in the event that it is needed in the future, or if the city approaches us and asks that we deploy backup battery units, then we are able to do that without having to come back.
Okay. But that specific prohibition would not, at this point, inhibit you in any way, since you're not planning to use that anymore?
I do not, I do not believe that it would. Because we're not attaching anything to the ground, it would all be on the pole, yes.
Right, and so that would not be preventing you from doing anything? Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Does staff have your contact information? You need to give, either fill out one of those cards or--
Yes, I have my business cards, yes.
So they know how to get in contact with you.
Okay.
I'll walk these over.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Cavidia, go ahead.
Just one, one point of information. The definition of the antenna that would be deployed in the air is three cubic feet.
Okay.
No, no larger than three cubic feet.
Mr. Cavidia.
Frank Cavidia, 104 Gold Rush Court. More of a question than anything else, and maybe the gentleman can answer. As I understand it, and I think Councilman Wolf kind of gets it, we're going to need a lot of these things. These things, the range on them, it's not the same as the massive cell towers. I only have one question, and maybe the-- I only have one question, and maybe the staff can answer it also. If these things are sitting on a public right-of-way, I assume we're going to be paid rent for them or something, and the city always seems to be looking for revenue, so I'd kind of like to know a little more about that, too. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing, and maybe I could actually ask staff to clarify on that rent. I assume that we can only charge application fees.
It's a recurring fee in the...
So there is a reoccurring fee, and when we mentioned that there would be a master license agreement, the master license agreement will be coming forward to the council, and in that, we would be looking at what those fees would be for use of public facilities.
Okay. Just, sorry, just to add a bit, as was mentioned, given that the telecom carriers have a franchise to use the right-of-way, in California, you're not allowed to charge for them to just be in the right-of-way. So if they were to install a facility in the right-of-way, or install on a facility in the right-of-way that the city does not own, then you cannot charge them for that. But if it's a city-owned pole or something, then you can charge rent.
Got it. Mr. Nepper.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Unlike the cell towers that were talked about earlier, in fact, there actually is one over in community park as well. What the telecommunication industry found when they were in the cell tower business was various jurisdictions were charging various amounts, and so through the FCC, they actually looked for uniform application and lease payments. So there is a revenue stream, but as indicated, it's only if they're attached to poles that the public owns, which means the city owns. And just a little earlier, there was a comment about Astound, and I know with Councilmember Wolf has asked this question. Astound is not in Clayton, operational in Clayton, because Astound does not wish to be in Clayton. That's very clear. Astound made a business decision to stop at the borders of Concord. Has nothing to do with, the city was an obstructionist, the city hindered them or whatnot. We have actually informed them in the past that we would invite them in, they're welcome to come in. Their decision was to stop at the borders. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to clarify that I was talking about AT&amp;T U-verse at the time and the fact that they can't go from their cell point too far into where, I mean, I can't even get it in Peacock Creek. So that was, that was my comment, was a technological problem.
Okay, so I think I closed the public hearing, and if I didn't, it's now closed, so back to the council for discussion. Councilmember One.
I just have a couple of comments. They're not really questions, but, you know, in this letter that was sent, I know that you weren't the author, so that's fine. There's a couple of things that are just not accurate in this letter that I think that we, you, the staff indicated that they reviewed, even in the, they numbered all their points, so just you could take it back as comment, but, you know, in number one, it says that the, any appeal process must be done de novo. That's not accurate. The section talks about it can be done de novo, not that it must be. The letter asserts that the appeal involves notice and hearing. That's, that's not accurate either. It doesn't necessarily have to do that. It says at the letter, in case the applicants are required to pay a deposit for any consultant fees, I don't think that's accurate either. I think that's, that's an option that we have. In addition, let's see. In number four, under section two, it talks about an underground requirement that the city, it says that we require undergrounding equipment, but this, that's not accurate either. Three B five in our, you know, in our design guidelines say that the criteria, it describes criteria for ground cabinets, and so to say that we require them to be underground is not accurate. I think it's a preference that we state. But there's, I mean, there's a host of questions that I think I, staff, would have to take time to research, and I don't want to go through the 30 or so questions regarding the letter, so I could send them, and then you could look at it in advance and then respond back whenever you have a chance. I think I'll, I'll do that rather than go through each one because they're somewhat in the weeds.
Okay. Vice Mayor Piers.
Yes, well, I believe our city attorney and our experts at BB&amp;K have seen this letter and have had a chance to look at it, and I'd like them to comment on whether there's anything in here that prohibits us from going ahead with an urgency ordinance and why.
So overall, no. I would not say there's anything that would prohibit you from going forward with the ordinance. There aren't, most, I would say, most of the comments are focused on the guidelines, or, sorry, the design standards being done through resolution, which, as David noted, the staff does anticipate having to amend as technology changes and as carriers give more input. They're happy to work with Verizon and other carriers to kind of reach a middle ground. They're not trying to prevent deployment, and there's even a portion of the ordinance that allows a waiver to prevent a violation of federal law, so nothing would restrict them from installing here if, as long as the design is complied with federal law and there was reasons for it. With regards to the comments on the standards, you know, we've discussed them with staff. Again, sometimes I think it's a difference of interpretation. Other times, we're going to have to seek a little more clarification from Verizon. For example, there's a section that mentions that the size restrictions are too great, but doesn't suggest any alternative size restrictions, and the staff is certainly open to it. They don't want to prohibit service, which they're not allowed to do, but they also don't want to allow massive installations. Also, just to kind of clarify on this 28 cubic foot number and the three-foot cubic number, we view that definition, the small wireless definition, that's where that's coming from, from the small cell order, as being used for the purpose of defining a small wireless facility for the applicable shot clock. We don't view that as a size requirement that needs to be forced into like a design standard, so it doesn't, I guess, entirely dictate, like, the installations don't have to be that large. And we can also provide some photos as well later, but generally, these installations can vary. Sometimes they can be on top of the pole, like you may see, it almost tapers a little or it's like a wreck, kind of a tube cylinder on top. Other times, they can be what's called side-mounted or backpack. It looks a little bit like the speaker, like that, and occasionally, they can use ground cabinets as well. So that's a kind of an overview of the designs. Sorry, actually, just one more point, too. I will note that if the city were to go ahead and, as Verizon suggested, hold off until they can kind of develop standards that they're happy with, you would be exposed to, if an application came in, you wouldn't have any design standards in place, and you wouldn't have any process to really make a decision in time, which would be quite problematic.
Vice Mayor Piers.
Yeah, I, I feel pretty strongly that we need to go ahead and put some reasonable guidelines in here. I do have some concerns, and I know that, you know, if something came up and we determined we made an oops and really needed to fix it because it was prohibitive, we'd go back and fix it. But I don't want to be uncovered completely, and I think, you know, we've asked our experts to, to look at this extensively, so I'm not concerned about going forward, given the assurance from our attorneys, who we pay to do that kind of thing, that we should go ahead. One of the, the only question I really actually have on the urgency ordinance is practically at the very end, at the end of section four under SEQA and the notice of exemption, it's the last sentence in that section, that it should be filed with the county clerk. Who officially is responsible to file that, or is that intentionally left out? Is that the city engineer who files that? Is it the city clerk? Is it? Who is it? Or does it matter?
It doesn't matter. It can be either.
Okay, cool. All right, then, if we were, and I don't know if you want to take these all together, I don't have any other issues with the urgency ordinance, but I do have some questions on the design standard section.
Okay.
Which we are hoping to adopt tonight by resolution. Okay, so I had some questions on that, and it's in section B on the location on prohibited zones, and I know that the Verizon representative said they don't intend to do ground-mounted, but somebody else might. And so I think we need to make sure that ground-mounted units, especially if they are those bigger boxes for some of those extra pieces of equipment, would be very clearly out of the sightlines of an intersection in, out of that 35-foot triangle, and where the residence view won't be obstructed when they're trying to go through an intersection, whether it's a four-way stop or a two-way stop. I don't want a box that's high enough that it could obstruct the vision of someone trying to, to get out. The other question is, if they're placed on the sidewalk, as they might have to be periodically through a residential area, is it going to be, how do we keep it from blocking the sightline from someone getting out of their driveway? And, yes, I realize cars can do that, but if it's back at the back of sidewalk or something like that, or on the street side of the sidewalk, I'm just asking questions. And in the section called, I guess it's six, I wrote over it, the curb setback requirement prohibited within two and a half feet of the face of curb, would we be able to have a review of those in a case-by-case basis to make sure that if in case we had, for instance, a four-foot sidewalk, and they were putting it, you know, two and a half feet back, is that room for a wheelchair to reasonably get by safely? I don't know. I'm asking questions.
Through the mayor, I could respond...
Please.
...to those questions. There will be an application. The application would provide site plan and elevation view drawings so that we could evaluate things like site distance, path of travel, compliance with ADA requirements. I believe all of those are addressed in the design guidelines and in some cases, the ordinance as well, but the application materials would provide the opportunity to evaluate and for the staff. These design and development standards, along with the ordinance, are our guide, so the things, the very things you're mentioning would be reviewed as part of the plan check process.
Okay, so it would be specific enough in the application for each individual installation dimensions, all of that, so we'd know whether we have any of those obstructions, either to site or to physical movement?
Yes.
Those were most of the types of questions that I had. I think, I think that's all of them.
Okay. Any other comments?
My concern, I would be that we don't cut off our nose despite our face here. The, I think it's important that we protect the citizens of Clayton with an ordinance and design standards, excuse me. The word urgency kind of bothers me a little bit because I don't know that we're up against any, any fences at this point, that people are knocking down the door to get into Clayton. But given that, I would certainly like to have a presentation of some kind so that the public can understand what it is that they're going to be seeing. What is, you know, everything here has been very vague. It's three feet, it's 28 feet, it's, it's the same as a speaker. So as far as that goes, I would like to take a second look or another look or a first look, whatever it is, at the actual design of these things that we're going to be facing because, like Mr. Cavidia said, we're going to need many of these throughout the entire city in order to cover the city. And I've seen some of this technology already, and I know that they're, they're going to have to be pretty prevalent.
I just want, I just wanted to note that design standards prohibit installation in all of the downtown as it stands, so I don't know if that's intentional, but the town center specific plan area is a prohibited zone that covers a large part of our, well, I mean, we're not that big, so it covers a large part, but that's not...
Why does it prohibit?
Well, in here, it says prohibited zones under section B, number three. It lists the town center specific plan area as a prohibited zone.
Can I ask staff, is there, what's the reasoning for that exclusion?
The concern and rationale was in terms of the decorative features in the downtown, that placement of the wireless facilities on some of those decorative features in the town center area would not be consistent with the character of the downtown, and that the small cell wireless facilities alternatively could be placed perhaps on private property in that area to, private properties in that area to reach the coverage or provide the capacity and coverage necessary.
Well, so just so we set the table correctly, if the entire downtown is a prohibited area, essentially all the residential districts that on the poles are prohibited areas, were a very large prohibited area. So if our intent is to encourage the technology, I don't know if we've hit the mark exactly, and I think that we can make some tweaks here and there, kind of consistent with what Councilmember Wolf said, but that's...
Just responding from staff, that was a discretionary call, and so if that gives, you know, some considerations of too restrictive, then we can merely cross that out when it comes to adoption of the resolution.
Which section is that checked?
Section, section 3B...
Three, page two of the resolution.
Okay.
3B3.
So if there's no, if there are no other comments, are we ready for a action which would be, I think, we have a number of items in front of us, including the urgency ordinance, but then also the design guidelines, so is there a motion on the first item? Are there any, and does, does that motion include any amendments?
I'm on the fence.
Mr. Waltering, yeah?
Mayor Catalano, as the city manager indicated, there are certain aspects of this. For example, the town center specific plan area is an area where the small cell wireless facilities would not be located per the design guidelines as cited. That could be changed. So again, the objective here is to balance allowing, bringing 5G to this community and the advantages of 5G, but at the same time, trying, trying to address the community concerns and impact. So if there are certain aspects that you would suggest modifying, we certainly would like to hear that.
So let me clarify one of this. So I guess the FCC orders, so they became effective on April 15, 2019, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So with those in place, those two orders did preempt state and local regulations quite a bit. So if we do nothing, and if there's no local regulations, then we're simply complying with FCC order? Is that correct?
Yes.
But the risk, I think the risk is that if we do something that's too restrictive, we could run afoul of the restriction on, like, essentially prohibiting it through restriction.
Correct, but if, also if there's, if we realize that there is additional modifications, ordinances can always be amended. But Mr. McGrathel, can you please?
Sure. So with regards to the order, yeah, the FCC basically said that cities had until April 15th was like the reasonable timeline to have something in place. Not everyone has stuff in place by then, but one of the requirements for the design standards was that they be published in advance, and what that's read to mean is publish in advance of receiving an application. So, but the order didn't lay out any kind of like default or safe harbor design standards. So as a result, if the city didn't have anything in place prior to receiving an application, then would effectively have no standards to control what, it would be like whatever applies now, so that could be a little bit more difficult.
I would recommend the urgency ordinance.
Yeah, I'm personally at least not comfortable with the scenario that there are no regulations whatsoever, so I would rather have something in place, and like I said, if there are subsequent discussions or subsequent research by staff, happy to amend it, but not comfortable, like I said, with that scenario. Mr. McGrathel?
Just, sorry, just one more thing I want to add, and then that... And then that waiver provision that's in the ordinance will kind of help prevent any sort of, if everything at this, I guess, juncture, if something were shown to be too restrictive or violate law, then they would be able to issue a waiver. So specifically, it's in Section 12.05.050. It's on page seven of 17 of the ordinance. Subpoint B basically gives the city engineer the ability to waive any portion of this ordinance, and we would, you know, and thus the accompanying design standards that this kind of gives the authority to create, to prevent any, you know, violation of law or effective prohibition of wireless services.
Can you give me that reference again?
Sure. 12.05.050, subpoint B. So it's titled Regulations. It's under the header General Standards for Wireless Facilities in the Public Rights of Way.
Page seven.
Who makes that determination?
So it would be if the city engineer determines that it's been shown that, that an applicant has established that the denial of the application would violate, you know, applicable law or regulations, then they'd have the ability to waive whatever is needed, generally to the smallest extent necessary, to prevent that.
I think that section, I think that section needs to specify the city engineer.
Okay. Got it. I see.
Okay. Vice Mayor Pierce.
Yeah, you know, I think with the understanding that Clayton is going to be collaborative in trying to allow new technology, but needs to have some standards in place, I think the direction that we give is to go ahead and adopt the ordinance with the understanding that if we find there is a conflict that creates an issue with the technology, and there's a good reason why our ordinance needs to be adapted, or something needs to be waived, that that will be done. I think we need to, in adopting this urgency ordinance, state that we believe this is a technology that we want to bring to our community, and we want to work collaboratively, but we don't want to be totally unrestricted because we care about the appearance of our community. We care about the safety of our community. And so I think if we were to state that intent ahead, that we intend to be collaborative but careful in how we do this for our community, I think staff understands that very clearly, and that we will, our intent is not to prohibit the technology, but to make sure that it works for our community in the best way we can make it work. And, I mean, I think our staff would do that anyway, but unlike some jurisdictions that might say, hell no, we don't want it at all, you know, I think we out here on the outskirts of the area where we're sometimes in the shadow of a mountain that gets in the way of an aerial cellphone signal or something like that, yes, this is the wave of the future, and this is what's going to bring us the service that we want to be competitive. So that would be just my two cents. So I think the city manager has a comment.
Mr. Napper?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Pierce is exactly right. Just from the staff perspective, there was no drafting of this ordinance with the intent to blunt the arrival of this technology, none whatsoever. However, I think those of us who have been in this community for a period of time, oftentimes the community residents don't understand what is taking place, but when a size of that speaker, or larger, hits a telephone pole or a light pole near their residence, they're absolutely going to come unglued. It's just the way the community is in terms of design. So that's what we're looking at. If we find out that, in working with Verizon or another telecommunications carrier, that in fact, our ordinance is so restrictive that they will stop at the conquered borders once again, well, then we have not addressed what our intent is, and we can reexamine that. But as indicated by the mayor, April 15th was the deadline to get it in place. So just a thought process is, is go ahead with the urgency ordinance, and go ahead with the introduction of the other ordinance, and then at your subsequent meeting, when you have the adoption of the regular ordinance, we will bring pictures back to share with you as to what some of the visual indications will be associated with this.
But we should do the resolution tonight as well.
Correct. Because that's embodied in the urgency ordinance as well.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion then. I'll make a motion that we have, that we have, hold on.
The city clerk read Urgency Ordinance 486 by title and number only and waive further reading. I seconded your motion, Mr. Mayor.
So on that, on that motion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously.
Ordinance number 486, an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Clayton, enacted pursuant to California Government Code Section 36937, amending the Clayton Municipal Code Title 12 Streets and Sidewalks to add Chapter 12.05 Wireless Facilities and Public Rights of Way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll make the motion this time. I would move that we approve a motion by four-fifths affirmative vote to adopt Urgency Ordinance Number 486 with the finding the adoption of this ordinance is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act because CEQA only applies to projects that have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment, and this activity is not considered to be a project, and can be seen with certainty that it will not have a significant effect or physical change to the environment.
I'll second that. It's been first and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Is this, this is the one we're actually approving, 486?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Can we do it with the changes that we just, that we talked about and agreed to?
Yes. With the amendments, sorry. I will amend my motion to include the amendments suggested.
1205060, Section F, making a show, and then specifying the city engineer in 1205050B.
Exactly.
Yes.
And as a secondor, I'll accept those changes as well. So it's been first and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously.
Okay, I would move that we adopt the resolution establishing design and development standards for wireless facilities in the public right of way as authorized by Section 12.05.050 of the Clayton Municipal Code.
Second.
So it's been first and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously.
And did we modify 487? Did we have amendments to that?
It's the same thing.
No, okay. So that with the same amendments as to 486, I would make a motion to have the city clerk read ordinance number 487 by title and number only and waive further reading.
I'll second that. It's been first and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously.
Ordinance number 487, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Clayton to amend the Clayton Municipal Code Title 12 Streets and Sidewalks to add Chapter 12.05 Wireless Facilities and Public Rights of Way.
I would move the introduction of ordinance number 487 with the finding that the adoption of this ordinance is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act because CEQA only applies to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment, and this activity is not considered to be a project, and can be seen with certainty that it will not have a significant effect or physical change to the environment.
Second.
So it's been first and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. And I think we are done with that item. Which brings us to item 8A, which is Councilmember Juan requests to discuss the traffic and pedestrian safety around Mount Diablo Elementary School and Diablo View Middle School in Clayton. And I believe, Councilmember Juan, you have some opening remarks.
Yes. Sure, thank you. So I asked for this item about traffic and pedestrian safety because it's something that I think is an important matter to all of our residents. With the recent incident that we had with a student involved in an accident just outside the elementary school, it brought greater focus on just how serious and immediate this issue can be. I think that we can talk about that specific incident and location, but also the broader topic of traffic and pedestrian safety around our schools generally. So I wanted this opportunity for people to share ideas and discuss what's possible to increase the safety of our students and residents, primarily to seek input and see if there are things that can be done that we aren't currently doing. In that vein, I've invited both the principals from Diablo View Middle School and Mount Diablo Elementary, so they can share, they may share what ideas they would have on what could be effective for our students. So at this time, if the principals would like to take turns.
We won't be taking turns because Ms. Banister had to leave.
Sorry.
But that's okay. We collaborate a lot, and we've talked about upping the information of safety around our schools, paying attention to traffic signals, signs, and directions. And at the elementary level, beginning in August, we're going to add Street Smarts to our assembly program so that the children can hear it regularly. And that's also what I spoke to the district about adding those two things, which they agreed with, and Jeff and I had met. And Ms. Banister says if there's something that we want to add at the middle school, she is open to suggestions as well.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question, or?
You may.
Yeah, so I do remember as a parent, I think in August that you do, I think at least the elementary school, maybe in the middle school, that you provide at least like a pamphlet of like safe drop-off and whatnot, but maybe, I don't remember even what it contained right now, and maybe in August, there's so many number, pieces of paper that we get as parents, so.
Might be. I haven't seen it since I've, this is my first year at this site.
Okay.
But, I mean, we can certainly find it or do one. That might help.
Yeah, there is, there is instruction at the beginning of the year on, like, what to do around the school, essentially.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
And I know that you had, that you had prepared a letter.
Yes.
That you were asking for support from the full council on in endorsing some of these safe practices, and I, I think that was introduced in the agenda packet as well. And so we made some aesthetic modifications on centering and whatnot, but I, I would support that as well. I think that's, that'd be a good practice, and with the cooperation of the, with the police at the beginning of the year, starting next year, to help with that presentation.
Yes, and I think the intent in my heart was that we're all working together for the safety of the city.
Yeah, I'm glad you are bringing Street Smarts. That actually is a program that we pay for as part of our Transpac fees, and they actually work for Transpac for that TDM program, which is incredibly effective. And immediately after our last meeting, I think it was two days after our meeting in April, I talked to our TDM coordinators and asked them if they might be able to reach out and contact both of the schools about doing a better reminder, not just in every other year, Street Smarts, but really incorporating a program. It doesn't seem that some parents are teaching their children as forcefully as they may be used to in, in what the rules of traffic safety are, and maybe we need a little stronger reminder to both the parents and the kids about what's safe and what's not. Any of us who've had to stop fast when somebody's darted out from between two cars knows the hard stopping effect that has on the driver as well as everyone in the vicinity. So just reminding the kids that this is not a safe thing to do, they think they're invulnerable, but they're, they're not. And so we need to remind them where the safe routes are, and I know that the staff at our TDM program through Contra Costa Transportation Authority is already looking forward to that meeting, and they are, are planning for it already, and plan to make it very entertaining as well.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
So I just had a couple more comments. You know, I think rather than a single thing as a panacea, I take the view that layered approach to overall safety is more effective. I see those layers as supervision, deterrence, and enforcement. Right now, as far as supervision, we have two crossing guards around the elementary school, both that are, that ostensibly go through the funding of the city. One is at the intersection of Mitchell Canyon and Pine Hollow, and the other's at the bottom of the hill on Oak and Center, on Oak and Center. I don't know if there's an opportunity for additional guards at additional locations. That's something that I've given thought to. As a matter of deterrence, I think at some locations, like where this particular incident took place, there are posted no pedestrian crossing signs or those metal bars. But I still think regardless of that, there are still a number of both students and adults who cross at that location. I think making it more difficult to engage in certain behaviors like that crossing could reduce occurrence of incidents. You know, we can talk about what we think is viable as additional deterrents, but, you know, you can go from the most restrictive to having like a median fence that divides the street, which I think would be very restrictive. Or, you know, right now, we, we restrict eastbound turns onto Four Oaks from that street, but westbound turns are allowed, and so I believe that a lot of parents turn west onto Four Oaks to do drop-off and then have their parents cross, or have the students cross there. I've seen that pretty frequently. And so if we restrict westbound turns as well, I think that would reduce that crossing. You know, we could paint, simply paint the intersection differently, something like that. You know, I think, you know, and outside of that specific location, still with the overall theme of pedestrian and traffic safety, I'm always, I've always been a big fan of pedestrian, what do you call it, beacons that exist at crosswalks. And I know that when we had our budget meeting the past two weeks ago, we talked about various grants that were available to install those beacons, and I think that's in process in some, some certain locations in the city. But to the extent that those are available, I think that those are, those always assist me as a driver, so I really like the traffic beacons. It helps me see when people are crossing. And then as far as enforcement goes, I know that in the past, there were, there were occasions that during peak times, there was a greater police presence. And even, even though the city, you know, I know that we're both time and resource constrained, I always appreciate seeing the Clayton PD around town, so I don't know if there's an opportunity to increase enforcement during just certain limited peak times, just at the high frequency or high traffic areas. So for me, those are just some of my initial ideas. As I said, the purpose is to kind of seek larger input to see if there's other opportunities that we may think are worthwhile, and that we'd like to pursue, that, you know, that we haven't thought of.
Okay. Well, let's open up a public comment, because I have a feeling there are a number of people here for this item, so I don't have any speaker cards, but would love to have and hear any input from our public, if anybody would like to approach the podium. And please just state your name and then provide your comments.
So I'll just ask you to bear with me. My name is Lainey Klein-King, and I'm the parent of three children. Two of my children attend Mount Diablo Elementary School in the second and the fifth grade. And I want to extend a thank you to Councilmember Juan and the City of Clayton for putting this important issue of traffic safety on the agenda this evening. I've had a longstanding concern about traffic safety around the school even before my son was hit at the intersection of Four Oaks and Mitchell Canyon. On March 22nd, while loading my second grader into the car, I received the call that is every parent's nightmare. It took me two minutes to arrive to the accident scene, and my son's first words to me was that he was so, so sorry. He said, "I love you so much, and I'll never take anything for granted." We had walked the route to school for many years, and always crossed with Lynn, the crossing guard at Pine Hollow. So he knew the correct way to go to school, and that morning, he crossed at a shortcut, instead of with Lynn, our dedicated crossing guard who crosses the kids at Mitchell Canyon and Pine Hollow. And because in his 10-year-old mind, his main concern was that he was late for school. So I'm beyond grateful that my son is alive and sustained minimal injuries, and I'm grateful that he was wearing a helmet. I'm grateful to this community of kind and caring parents, one of whom was brave enough to call me to tell me my son had been hit, another who was willing to jump out of his truck and ignore honking cars to tend to my son and call 911. truck and ignore honking cars to tend to my son and call 911. It is because we are a tight and caring community that I'm confident in our ability to make positive changes together. My friend Chris Callahan lives at the Four Oaks Mitchel Canyon intersection, and not only did he wrap my son in a warm blanket and comfort my daughter on scene, but he has heard and witnessed multiple accidents in front of his house. Two to three years ago, Chris witnessed a child hit on a motor scooter. And a couple of years before that, two sisters were hit in the same spot. The owner of another Kitty Corner home mentioned other non-fatal accidents in the intersection. While there is a no pedestrian crossing sign at the Four Oaks and Mitchell Canyon intersection, kids continue to cross there on bikes and scooters. And adults regularly cross there with their kids before and after school. This begs the question of whether there needs to be additional deterrence or a formal crossing in that location. I am not a traffic expert, but as a parent, my main concern is that no one else is harmed en route to school. This location is particularly tricky because there is a cut-through at the end of Four Oaks, making it the perfect shortcut for pedestrians and ultimately tempting anyone running late, especially those families who turn right and park on Four Oaks and then run across the street with their kids. If despite these multiple accidents, pedestrians continue to use this shortcut, it begs for action. And the month and a half after my son's accident, I still see literally at least one or two people running across that exact same intersection every morning. So I was, I did bring this up with the Mount Diablo Unified School Board. There's a member of the school board who is very passionate about safe routes to school and has done a lot of work around Walnut Acres with safe bike paths and walking paths. So she shared with me that there's a parent from Ignacio Valley Elementary School who's been looking at reinstating the crossing guard program in Concord, which they had cut. And in the process of trying to reinstate that program, a 95-page report was prepared by the Concord PD and shared with Concord City Council. So I did send that to Councilmember Juan because in it were a variety of good recommendations about traffic safety, and I think some good ideas about potential things we could do around Mount Diablo Elementary. Some included signs, but from what I could, from what I read through, one recommendation of note to me was that, that there should be a school route plan for each school serving elementary to high school students. This was, this was recommended. It should be prepared in order to develop uniformity in the use of school area traffic controls and to serve as the basis for a school traffic control plan for each school. The school route plan developed in a systematic manner by the school law enforcement and traffic officials responsible for school pedestrian safety should consist of a map showing streets, the school existing traffic controls, established school walk routes, and established school crossings. We do get a little bit of information, but this specifically spoke to a map. There was a visual map that laid out all of the safe routes to school. And in my opinion, I believed as parents, we need that information at the beginning of school. It needs to be comprehensive, and then it needs to be shared periodically throughout the school year. So I do think that would be beneficial. And ultimately, I think that particular intersection needs to be looked at closely to determine whether things like fines or other deterrents are really the answer because it's used so frequently. Some other parents brought up some concerns to me as well. I don't drop off in this area, but parents did bring up that at drop-off, parents are stopping on Clayton Road and blocking traffic to drop off their kids, and that could cause a major accident, especially because people travel much faster on Clayton Road. So at the corner of Clayton and Mount Zion, kids are being dropped off right there, and cars are stopping in traffic to do that. So that was one concern I wanted to share. And, and also, my neighbors on El Camino feel strongly that a sidewalk along the length of Pine Hollow would really limit pedestrians from needing to cut across through Verna Way and then go through the shortcut, but they would have a straight, straight cut down Pine Hollow all the way down. And we just lack sidewalks on Pine Hollow between El Camino and Atchinson Stage, except for the very new housing that was just built where they had to put sidewalks in. So I look forward to hearing any recommendations from the city engineer and from other parents and community members, and thank you for letting me share.
Great, thank you. Anyone else who'd like to share any comments or feedback, please come to the podium.
My name is Chuck Delu. I live in Walnut Creek, but I happen to be an acquaintance of the Kings. And I was just interested in the accident when it happened, so I drove around there, and I had a few ideas. At the intersection of Four Oaks and Mitchell Canyon, currently, there is one no pedestrian crossing sign, and I'm not sure which direction is which, but if Four Oaks is, tell me which way it is. Is it north or south, or?
It runs east-west.
It's what?
It runs east-west.
East-west, okay. So if I'm coming, if I'm going, going west, there's a no pedestrian crossing sign on the left. There is no pedestrian crossing sign on the right. There used to be. There are pole holes. The sign had been beaten up and is gone somewhere. I believe that may have been the direction that the, that the person that was walking crossed. There are no other pedestrian crossing, no pedestrian crossing signs on either, on the other side of the street.
There's, there's one. There's one on each side.
No, there's not.
Really?
There's, there's one. That's on the left side as you're going west. That that needs to be looked at. If people are not, not, not supposed to cross there, well, give them an idea that they're not supposed to cross there. The, the sign that was, is missing, the one that has holes on it on the right side as you're, you're going south, was knocked down. Whether it's to be put up again, I don't know, but if it's put up again, the combination of that and the existing stop sign, there's little room for people to walk there because of landscape gaping. I believe that the right-of-way is wide enough so that there could be ample space for people to walk and continue to head, I guess, south toward Pine Hollow. But right now, it's kind of like, hmm, you know, what do you, what do you do? There's also a number of places that need to be pruned to increase visibility. And that includes at, at Pine Hollow, the stop sign is going south, I guess, is often obscured. At Verna, there's high-distance issues as well coming out of Verna. At Four Oaks and Mount Zion, there's high-distance issues on the Four Oaks side, whereas if you're coming in from a few homes there in the parking lot and heading south, even though you stop at the stop sign, you can't see the people on the corner. The, the school sign on Mount Zion, in that same area from Canyon to, to Four Oaks, you can't see it, it's hidden totally in February. So these are immediate action things that can happen soon, and certainly before this COVID year begins, that that will make things a little better. It, it would be helpful also, I think, at Pine Hollow and Mitchell Canyon and Mount Zion and Pine Hollow to have always stop, placards on the, on the four-way stop, on the, on the always stop. And there's, again, going back to Four Oaks intersection where the missing sign is, it might be too difficult to put that sign up because I think it was hit maybe by a larger vehicle, maybe a garbage truck or something. So maybe there's, it would be a small construction project of actually creating a curb and a sidewalk connection there so they're not kind of running over landscaping and things like that, so it's harmonized. And that might make it easier to place a sign that will not get hit. There's a sign that, I drive from Yule's on Wheels. I, I do it several times a month. This is part of my, part of my route. And there's a sign on Mitchell Canyon as you're going south that says, no, no through traffic, no, no, it says, narrow road yield to oncoming traffic. This is as you're approaching Pine Hollow. The sign is, I'm not sure what it means. I know what it means, but I'm not sure why it's there, but why it's where it is. It's, the people on Pine Hollow, if they, if they turn and they continue to go south, they have no idea that that sign is there. And if you're trying to deal with, you know, trucks and things like that, it could be better placed, and you're, you don't need to have a sign like that when you're dealing with a school crossing and an always stop. So, and then when I was trying to look up to see what the rules were for bike safety and things like that, I was trying to see if there's something on a website that I could look at that would say, gee, these are what the rules are, and that'll be helpful, I think, so that it wouldn't have to be a handout paper in an assembly, but if I could just go and say it electronically, I think that that would help. Anyway, these, oh, and also at Four Oaks, if there are queues there at certain times of the day, where people are trying to circulate through that intersection, it might be helpful to paint a keep-clear message in the intersection so the, so the intersection itself isn't blocked up, and the people there are coming away from the school can, can get out easier, and someone isn't kind of blocking the intersection as much. But anyway, these, and I, I agree with the previous figure that looking at the condition and, and the availability of sidewalks and pathways in and around this school is very important. So there are, are missing links that could be included in an ongoing construction project, that that would be helpful. So anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to? Go ahead, please just state your name and provide your comment.
My name is Amy Scott. Sorry, this is too short for me. I actually reside on Mitchell Canyon. My children do not attend Mount Diablo Elementary, but I see Miss Lynn on the corner every morning. I, I witness the traffic and how people, and I know that we have lack of sidewalks. So as much as the children and the Street Smarts education, we try to educate the children, it doesn't, it does not help them if they're using their scooters or their bikes. There's no sidewalks available on Mitchell Canyon and Pine Hollow, so it is challenging. That's why they do take the Verna way to cross often. Signage is poor. Prior to Will King getting hit, my dog was hit on Mitchell Canyon. It's very unsafe on Mitchell Canyon. People fly down Mitchell Canyon every morning, every evening, and as well as Pine Hollow. Something needs to be done. Although my children don't attend there, I know many of the children in our vicinity, and it's unsafe. And Miss Lynn does the best that she can. I see her every morning, but it's still not safe. And signage is poor on, on, I don't even know that street that, sorry, I just came from work, but I wanted to speak here. I came here with my children. It's unsafe. It needs to be addressed, whether it be on Mitchell Canyon with speed bumps, whether it be sidewalks, something needs to be addressed. Children, animals, everyone, it's unsafe. And that's what I came to talk about, as well as support Laney King because her child was hit. Many children have been hit at that intersection, and there's only one Miss Lynn. And there's many families crossing, so something needs to be done.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody else? Go ahead.
Wendy Loughlin, Stranahan Circle, 227. I actually wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I also am friends with Laney, and I have a third grader at Mount Diablo Elementary, and I've known Julie forever. And I know that Julie, you're familiar with this whole scenario, but I just want to make point, too, that there's a lot, the parents are frustrated, obviously, with the traffic, and I'm not, I don't even know if there's anything we can do about that. There's just a lot of kids, I guess, I don't know. But a lit-up crosswalk, maybe. Also, people are turning right on that street, like you were saying, but then they're also making a U-turn and then going straight. So they're still ending up going this way. I don't, sorry, I don't remember naming that street.
Four Oaks.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they turn right.
And then they're making.
And then they will make a U-turn to go straight across.
Yeah, so they're still getting that left-hand turn, whether they go this way or this way.
I see that every day, actually.
The other thing is they're doing is they're flying through neighborhoods to go that big horseshoe all the way around the school, flying through those streets with kid, now, and now we're having parents who are parking down those streets, trying to drop off down there. They're almost getting hit down there. So now they're nowhere near the school, and they're still dealing with this problem. So for me personally, I know everybody who needs to leave earlier, I get it, but we all have those Monday mornings with the third grader, fourth grader, that just won't get out of bed or whatever. I mean, it happens. It happens. And I had my son come home the day that William was hit, obviously thought it was super cool that the helicopter came to the playground, but I also had to go through motions that I didn't expect to go through quite yet. And he doesn't know William, but he knew of him, same area, grades and all that. So anyways, it is frustrating as a parent, and I know Mr. Bruno is out there every single morning, move it along, move it along, get them going, get them going. Hugs, kisses to you, four more kisses, four more kisses. No, let's go. And he tries, and it's hard, but as a parent, I can speak, it is frustrating to try to drop a crit off there. And so then we did the bottom of the hill for a while. Now it's crazy down there. That poor crossing guard is out, she can't handle them all, they're bombarding, and it's just, it's a lot. So I don't know. I thought light-up crosswalks, maybe something like that in that little area, but they will cross there no matter what. I hate to say it, but they're gonna do it. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I just had some random thoughts. I worked at Mount Diablo Elementary for seven years. I've been out for five. So I've witnessed over the years all of this. One of my big concern was the quarry trucks coming down. I can't believe they can't find an alternate route for those quarry trucks. That has always scared me. The other thought I had sitting here is, they used to have like for junior and seniors at charter years ago, if they could have a program where these seniors had extra credit for the morning class to do a safety patrol. And we had like six of these high school seniors out there, safety patrol. It would help the crossing guard, more bodies out there, whistles, signs, whatever, waving. If we had more control over the children, the drop-off. If we had more control over the children, the drop off, one crossing guard, even two crossing guards cannot address it. We don't have the parking, everybody gets jammed up in the teachers parking, teachers can't park, you go into the parking, you make the circle. I know I've been late to work because of all the drop off there going through. There has to be a solution, but if we could have more bodies out there, more whistles, more signs, controlling the situation, it would be a big help. And my only thought is if we could involve the community, either volunteerism, get the students from charter involved, we need more people out there for an hour in the morning, an hour in the afternoon. And again, why do we have those quarry trucks coming down there with those students, elementary students crossing? The trucks scare me and I'm an adult. Anyway, thank you.
Can you state your name for the record?
Oh, yes, I'm Janice Hester and I live at Mount Eden Place in Dana Hills.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So I wasn't planning on speaking either, but I know Ms. Bannister had to leave. I have students at both schools, at Mount Diablo and Diablo View, and I agree with everything that Laney said. I think she had a bunch of great ideas that will super help everyone. I, like Laney said, I'm not a traffic expert, but in the meetings and discussions I've had with parents at Diablo View, there's also concern about all of our walkers at the middle school. I have children that walk from Dana Hills to Diablo View and a little bit of the difference between the elementary school and the middle school is there's lots of parents walking with those elementary school kids, there's not parents walking with the middle schoolers and I feel like there's kind of no one out there. So a couple of things that have been come up, and I don't know if these have been presented from Ms. Bannister or not, but would be like a diagonal crosswalks there so that all traffic can stop and the kids can all go to whatever corner they need to so they don't have to wait, cross and wait, and then cross and wait again. Another thought from someone was that when you come down Ignacio, there's that kind of warning, you need to slow down, sign and light that goes on. The commuters are flying over the hill, so if there could be something like that so they know and remember, there's a school coming up ahead. I think that that was an idea that someone had, like some sort of light that goes on when the light's red or, I don't know exactly how those work. So those are two ideas that were discussed at meetings for the middle school and just wanted to share those because middle school parents are also concerned.
Okay. And can you provide your name for the record?
Fire.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Chris. I live on Mitchell Canyon Road with my wife, Angel. What I wanted to say was that at the beginning of this whole thing, you guys were talking about how Brentwood has expanded and how big that community is and we're the ones who are suffering from them growing so big because everybody's driving through our neighborhoods now. And what I think would be, to me, we can talk about signs and speed bumps and all this stuff, but at the end of the day, it's all illusion unless it's enforced. And that, I actually read that in some Caltrans book that it said that it's a very tricky thing with speed limits and signs and that at the end of the day though, that these things have to be enforced. And so whatever that means to you guys, I think that it would be important to have, you know, people being ticketed, truthfully. And I also think, like I said last time, was if there was a no right-hand turn from Mitchell Canyon Road to Pine Hollow at the early commute traffic times, that would cut down on a lot of the traffic. And if there was a no left-hand turn from Pine Hollow to Mitchell Canyon in the afternoon, that would also cut down on traffic. That's all I have to say, you know, I'm sorry about, you know, your kid. That's horrible and it could have been prevented and I think that whatever measures we take, you know, we have to take something. I live on Mitchell Canyon, I'll put on a sidewalk right in front of my house, no problem. I'm working on it right now. So, you know, I think we could do something, so that's all I got, thanks.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. I think we'll bring it back to the council for further discussion. Go ahead.
Oh, I mean, I guess I've, some of the ideas expressed I think are viable and worthwhile. I think that no matter what we do, there's always a cost and there's, you know, there's both the cost in time and resources. So I just had some informational questions that I had that I wanted to get back so I could, it'll help inform, I think, informed the discussion. I know that there have been talk about, in the past when I was, you know, when my kids were younger at Mount Diablo, we, the PFC always talked about a crossing guard and they wanted additional guards and paying for guards and whatnot. And there was a question about the, if the PFC were to employ a guard, the liability and whatnot. But I know that we do pass through costs for the guards and I think, we had a conversation about the cost of guards and if, you know, we contract with an outside agency to provide guard services. And I think it's something in the neighborhood of 12,000 a year, give or take. So that was just a point of information. I guess the question I had were, you know, what you had mentioned about Diablo View, I think that the signs are already, or the traffic indicators are already set up to allow all-way crossing.
Yeah, I did want to comment that. That intersection, when pedestrian crossings occur, all signals are red, even right turns. So it's already an all-way stop.
Yeah.
So no cars are going to, well, they shouldn't because we know driver behavior, but they're not supposed to turn right or any other movement.
There's supposed to no right turn.
So Canyon and Clayton are the same way.
Yeah, there's supposed to no right turn, only one direction though, like if you're on Marsh Creek itself, then.
That's for vehicular traffic.
Yeah, for vehicular traffic.
If a pedestrian presses the button, all the lights turn red and that's when the pedestrians walk. And in fact, some of the kids even right now without a diagonal crosswalk are doing the New York City walk. And so, you know, they round things off. But, you know, for a large portion of it, because the signals are red, there, no car should be moving. This is at the middle school.
Yeah, yeah.
As well as Clayton Road and Mitchell Canyon Road.
That's right.
Yeah. And I guess from, when you're on Old Marsh Creek, I guess turning, if you are turning right onto Marsh Creek.
Marsh Creek, yeah.
There's that big lit that says no right turn.
Correct.
But there isn't a posted no right turn on red from the other directions, I don't recall, if you're on just regular Marsh Creek.
You mean from out of the school?
Yeah, either from out of the school at that, at that.
Yeah, they have kind of that bypass.
Yeah. Or from the other direction, turning into the school, or.
Eastbound.
Yeah, you're right, eastbound onto Old Marsh Creek. I think there's no, what do you call it, posted no right turn on red sign there during, even when pedestrians are crossing. So I guess my question is about the cost of those types of signs as well as actually painting the intersection to indicate the diagonals. I don't know if that's a, if that's a significant cost or not.
Well, our traffic engineer is here and he could, might be able to respond to some of those questions. We also have the chief and our, you know, traffic enforcement officer here as well. I do know that it was not long ago that Patty Bannister asked about redoing, well, that intersection of the middle school for, you know, all-way cross. And I remember in, that Mr. Allman, you did come up with an estimate because it's not as simple as just installing the boxes up there. You actually have to get then into the traffic controls and redo a lot of the infrastructure. But Scott, I don't know if you've had time to research, you know, that past estimate. It's not inexpensive, but then we understand the life, the lives that we're dealing with.
It is not inexpensive. I honestly, I could not find the estimate that we had been given. It was just a rough back of the napkin number. So I don't, you know, want to rely heavily on it. There are items that would need to be addressed at both of those intersections to make them fully safe for a, what a pedestrian scramble is what I think is.
Is that the technical term?
The technical term, yes. So we actually have, in this year's CIP are requesting, we've put in a project to look at both of those intersections to see if there are enhancements that can be made to them. So that is, that's something that we'll be bringing forward to you with the budget process. But there are items that need to be, but need to be looked at and need to be addressed. We are replacing a couple of the square box no right turn signals and they're, I believe, I think they were about $3,500 apiece to do the replacement. If we install new ones, they're actually going to be a little bit more expensive because you have to alter the post to get the supports and such, you know, put into place, it's a little more involved. But, so we're talking several thousands of dollars to do it, but, you know, we want to look at both of those and see what the opportunities are and what the cost of those would be. And then the other option or the other thought was to look at what other types of funding sources might be there to pay for some of this for us. You know, so it's, we try to take advantage of the fundings, the funding sources that are out there and make the best use of the funds that we can.
Can I interrupt one second? So I mean, and I don't want to fasten this discussion, but I'm a little bit concerned about time as well, but I think kind of what's in front of us today is also policy direction to staff as to what we'd like them to come back perhaps with any kind of resource or any additional items. So maybe, maybe we ought to today, I'm certainly in favor of having this item come back and to really kind of flush through it, things that we could do, whether they're physical improvements that we could do and what else we could do to collaborate with the schools and everybody to make the situation as safe as it can be. So maybe we should all, just kind of, if we're in favor of bringing this item back formally with potential staff resource, maybe we should indicate that and then provide any feedback or any ideas we want staff to look at and then actually come back and have it as a noticed hearing again. Vice President Pierce.
Yeah, we've had an offer from our TDM staff at Transpac and CCTA to come out to any meeting where we would like to have a presentation, whether it be for the council or any of the schools as well. And they're, they're very interested in helping with the education of the community.
Okay.
I think that's a good suggestion. So can I just go through a couple of things?
Yeah, go through your items and we'll all go through it.
Sure. So I guess when we come back, there's a few things I'd like to look at and if you could provide feedback when you return. The, we already talked about the marginal cost of increasing the number of guards, so I'd like to get an assessment of where we would put those guards, if any. You know, the feasibility of this, making that an official essentially scramble area at that intersection. Let's see. Making, you know, the actual intersection of Four Oaks and Mitchell Canyon, what would be like the logistics and cost of either, you know, both replacing the missing no pedestrian gray bar sign that's there? And then also like what it would take to restrict westbound turns onto Four Oaks because we already restrict eastbound turns? And then what it would also similar, or same question for what it would, what would be involved in if we want to propose a median fence at that location as well to completely stop cross traffic? And then what the approximate cost of installing pedestrian beacons are at a given intersection with the understanding that each intersection will have its own, its own specifics that would affect the cost, but some kind of ballpark associated with that. Yeah, that's all I got.
Okay. I, should we have, let me go through my list of items too. I mean, I concur with, I think, all of those and I really would like to have staff come back with sort of their analysis and some of the additional costs and kind of feasibility and the likelihood of, likelihood something is going to be actually helpful on, not only on like the crossing guards, but on any kind of physical improvements that might be helpful and where those would be located. Would love to learn more about the crossing guard scenarios and the cost, you know, there and where they could be helpful. I would love to also know if there's any, I do remember a time when the police officers used to be close in those intersections in the morning hours and if that's feasible, if that's, you know, if that's additional enforcement that could be helpful. I would love to know from the schools to how we as the city can support them better or in any additional way, like for example, the letter, I'm fully agreement with something like that, but obviously it comes down to the schools as well informing the students not only in the beginning of the year, but then thereafter because like I said, a lot of material gets distributed to parents in August and, you know, you don't remember it in December anymore. I would love to see that 95-page report that was referenced that was done in Concord.
Yeah, I read through some of it, but it's, some of it is beyond my expertise.
Yeah, yeah, but if we can, I mean, if there's any other material and if we can have the TDM person attend, that would be helpful. Would love to also at least understand what the quarry rules are. I think the quarry is not allowed to have trucks before 7:00 AM on Pine Hollow and I see them parked on Ignacio as early as 6:30 in the morning because they're waiting, but that doesn't help the middle, the elementary school for sure, if they're coming that way. But would love to understand what their requirements are. And I think that's it. I mean, I think whatever we do, I think has to be sort of a combined effort with the parents, with the schools, what we can do as a city. But would love to have some of that information and then have another public hearing so we can also get parents input on all of that stuff and so I think that's where, I'll just leave it at that for now.
I left off a couple of items.
Go ahead.
Several folks mentioned sidewalks, so I know that it's never as easy as it seems, but I am interested in what it would take for sidewalks in certain targeted areas. That lit sign on Marsh Creek indicating when the light turns, it's, when you're coming eastbound on Marsh Creek towards the middle school, it's actually kind of difficult to see that light when you're traveling at posted speed limit, even at 45 miles an hour, that light gets obscured like when you're, when you're going there. Usually it's green, but it's difficult to see because the foliage blocks it sometimes. So there's that. And then I know that Chris had mentioned the restricting turning on Pine Hollow. I think, to me, I think that gets into a larger question of traffic patterns, but I think if we comment on that at least to address it. And then, you know, southbound on Marsh, or sorry, southbound on Mitchell Canyon, but north of Pine Hollow, I think, something to slow down traffic there because everyone has to come to a stop there anyways. So I don't think additional, some kind of traffic calming in that area just before the stop sign could assist in slowing down traffic. So I think that's a host of things that we could talk about.
Anything else? Okay.
Well, I think, do you have enough direction from us?
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate all the parents coming out. It's sort of a parent's nightmare scenario. It takes a split second for anybody to make a wrong move and then it's too late, but I'm glad we're having the discussion and I look forward to it coming back and hopefully, hopefully there are things we can do as a city and hopefully we can bring more awareness to parents through schools as well. So thank you, everyone.
Okay, great. We will move on then to our next item and I'm actually asking our city managers, so we have a couple other items and we also have a closed session. Mr. Napper, sorry, we have a couple of items. I think we have three items left and I know we have a closed session. Are you, given that it's almost 10 o'clock, are you, what do you think in timing or should we just go one at a time or?
Well, that's at your pleasure. You're not supposed to start an item before or after 10 o'clock.
It's 11.
It's 11 o'clock.
11, okay.
It's 11.
Yeah.
But I'm freezing.
Nine o'clock, wasn't it?
It is cold in here, however.
Yeah, it is cold in here.
We're sitting under a very cold draft from the fan up there.
We'll get right on that in August.
Yeah, I know you will.
We will.
You will. It's up to you. I do need the closed session.
Yeah.
So I mean.
Say we press ahead and get to the other items and then get to the closed session.
Okay, let's just move forward then. Okay, we'll move on then to item 8B, which is the continued city council consideration of the formation of a city possession letter regarding the Costa Compact involving various objectives and resultant state legislation introduced to address the region's housing affordability crisis. And we already had this item in front of us one time. I think now we have a draft letter in our packets, so I think it is for up to further discussion to see what, if anything, we want to do and so forth. Who would like to start?
Well, just my items, I'll start. I mean, I think, you know, as we discussed, I prepared this draft letter. It reflects the sentiment, or I tried to express or reflect the sentiment expressed by each of us at the last meeting, voicing our concerns over loss of local control, the one-size-fits-all approach and the lack of it. control, the one-size-fits-all approach and the lack of attention to infrastructure like transportation, education, you know, the city services that go hand in hand with housing. I know that there's been a lot of activity both at the, oops, at each regional level talking about this. So there's a lot of things in motion. And I think that a lot of the principles that were, or at least I'd like to believe that a lot of the principles that were crafted in this draft reflect some of the, you know, the sentiment that we've each expressed. I drafted principles of a preferred approach when crafting legislation that looks at things holistically. You know, that local control is critical and whatnot. So I included comments about avoiding net losses of local funding, which I think is important to all of us, as well as I cautioned against actions that may crowd out, you know, our city, but as well as other cities' ability to utilize local tools to fund infrastructure. I think we all also expressed that. So I tried to capture the sentiment that we, that we all shared. There was an attachment that I detailed, specific discussion about each of the 10 elements. You know, some of those have been obviously changed, some for better, some for, in my view, worse. And, you know, and I think that there's going to be continued changes as the legislature moves through the machinations of the process, and that's expected. But, you know, along with those changes, we're getting more information. So that's good, I think. But, you know, I think because of the rapid changes, I think it emphasizes the importance of focusing on general principles rather than key specifics because the specifics can change faster than we meet. And, you know, by the time we can discuss something, it could change again. But I think to the extent that we can agree on overall principles on our method of approach, that to me is helpful. So that's, I don't know if you had a chance to read it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Diaz.
Okay, I've read the draft letter. I'm supportive of it. In fact, it mirrors much of the things that the Mayor's Conference Letter did and the city managers organization. So I'm comfortable with it. Don't have any objections.
Vice Mayor Pierce?
Yeah, I just had a question. Was it your intent to include the 10 points along with it? Because I have a little more concern about the characterizations in those charts that are illustrated in blue. The letter I can largely agree with because as said, it's, I had some tweaks here and there, some things that I would suggest we add just a word or two here to make it clearer. But I can, I can go along with that. I mean, it's something I've said over and over and over again in various meetings. One of the suggestions I would make would be that we not use the phrase is nearly 100% built out because everybody says that and there's still room on almost every town. It's one of those things that people interpret as putting up the hand and saying, no, the drawbridge is drawn. You can say you have limited number of lots available for development. One of the things following right after that first one in the second paragraph, I would say that we have consistently met or exceeded our zoning for our regional housing needs assessment because we haven't always built it because it's not our responsibility to build it. But to be specific, that we've met or exceeded our zoning for our RENA allocation. I have some issues with the characterization of the actions that were actually taken by ABAG and MTC. ABAG and MTC, neither one approved the CASA agreement. They allowed their chairs to sign it as members of the CASA committee. And with some huge list of caveats that we did not approve, specifically did not approve.
What were the creative license on that one?
Well, I understand. But to someone who serves on that board and would not have been willing to sign it when I was a member of CASA for all of the first meeting, you know, we talked for probably four hours and got done at quarter of 1:00 in the morning when we finally said our chair could sign it. But we didn't agree with these 10 things. We didn't agree with any of the points or any of the funding mechanisms. So technically we did not approve the contract. We said, Chair, you're part of the committee. If you want to sign the letter, you can sign the letter. But here's what we don't agree with. So, you know, as one who fought through that long evening, I would prefer we not say that it was approved by MTC and ABAG. I would say as signed by the MTC chair and the ABAG president.
I think that's fair.
I know that's, that may be picky, but it's, it's one of those things. I would also say, you know, I did mention have limited available lots for development. I would add down under funding and resources, I would just add under the third bullet that any new housing mandate should include a permanent source of funding. That's one of the things that Senator Bell made very clear when he was talking about SB 50, that if it's not a package and it doesn't include a permanent source of funding, then it all goes down the drain because you can't take one piece of it without the other. And so a permanent source of funding for us to help build affordable housing would be absolutely necessary. We don't have those resources. That's part of making it revenue neutral. And so I guess the question is, do you intend to include the charts or just the text in the letter?
Well, first, I would concur with all of your comments that you just mentioned. I think those are all fair. As the letter as drafted does contemplate including the attachment, it refers to the attachment. So it, you know, it kind of goes hand in hand. If we are not inclined to speak directly to each of those, then it could be edited to exclude that portion. But I do think it's important, I mean, personally, I think it's important to identify examples of ways where we think that the compact got it wrong and ways that we think that those elements could be adjusted to get it right. And so that was the intent. And then I think, you know, specifically on some of the items, some of the items like the ADU stuff, I think we can make edits and say, hey, yeah, this is good. You know, can you make it, can you adjust it a little bit? But for some of the things like the, what do you call it, the last one, the regional housing enterprise, I forget, they changed the name. The one that creates the new governmental.
The HABA.
Yeah.
And that's been changed several times over. And I talked with one of the authors just today, and it's going to be changed again. And MTC is talking about it with ABAG on Friday.
So to the extent that, you know, there's an element like that where I don't, I don't think any amount of adjustment will, will bring it into something that I'd say, let's do that. I think I would just say, we should just say no to things like that. And I think that was reflected in the meeting that, at the Mayor's Conference like last.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Last Thursday, where this idea that, you know, you have to kind of agree so that you get to participate, I think that idea, you know, I'm not, I'm not a fan. And so, you know, if creating a new governmental enterprise like that is something that we oppose, I think we should just say no to things like that. And so to the extent that there are things like that, I think it's helpful to give direction to our, to our sentiment by expanding on those specific elements.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And I will tell you, I have been working back and forth with the author of that bill for some time. And he and his staff were very candid that they felt trapped by the CASA compact on the specifics of that item, the funding and resources and the regional housing enterprise. And he was doing his best to do what he thought MTC staff were asking of him as an author of the bill. He has since very honestly said to me, if this isn't going to pass, let me know. And we'll see what we can do. He's already taken ABAG and MTC out of the language specifically. He's already agreed to consider using, and that's part of what we'll be talking about on Friday, going to and designating the county agencies that handle the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant Funds, as the recipient. The hangup of not having anybody as a regional entity is that you couldn't put a regional ballot measure on. So when I asked him if we could use ABAG, who already has a finance authority that we use for bonding and providing funds for local jurisdictions, as a pass-through to each of the county community development block grant programs, for them to do some kind of a formulaic dispersion of the funds out to individual communities, which is one of the amendments that was brought up by the Regional Housing Working Group that we were just working on. One of the suggestions there was that the money raised by a regional measure would be distributed based on the housing allocation in RENA that was assigned to that jurisdiction proportionately.
Yeah, and I think I kind of captured some of that sentiment.
Right.
But, I mean, I think, you know, to the extent that there's all these changes because of the disfavored nature of the element as written, then I think we're on pretty safe ground to say that we don't like it as written. If it makes these other things that materially change it, then I think we evaluate it as it comes.
Right. I understand that.
So that, you know, we emphasize the point, like if, it's Senator Chu. So if he's of the mind that if it's not going to pass and they want to change it, then I think it helps us out if we say this, this is no go. Please change it.
Well, and he's working on that.
Yeah.
But what he's working on is helping to find a source of funding to pay for the housing that has been identified as needed. And so how we govern that is something that we're still working through the process to get. If we can find an agency that's already established and used to dispersing those kinds of funds, that would be far more ideal. But if we have to have an agency that is able to put a measure on the ballot that would be a regional measure of some kind that does not attack existing funding for local jurisdictions because I absolutely agree with that, and he does too.
I mean, yeah, certainly. I think that's, that's kind of an element of solutioning though, right? Because, I mean, I don't, I don't, we're not attempting to solution what the problem is.
So I agree with your three bullets under funding and resources. But I'm not sure that we need to get into the specifics in the chart about it because you're actually making very positive statements in the three bullets in the end of the letter. And I don't see a problem with just leaving it at that because as, as we leave those as our goals, then we're not picking apart the details of some piece of legislation that's evolving and has changed before we even get the letter out. I think if you say what your goals are, then you're there.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Madam Mayor. We recognize Madam Mayor.
Yeah, so let me make a couple of comments too. I mean, so specifically on that, which is, you know, Senator, Assembly Member, sorry, Chu.
Assembly Member Chu.
Yeah, the 1487, you know, his recommendation. So this was actually discussed quite at length at the Mayor's Conference last Thursday. And the idea that there'd be a new regional agency raised a lot of concerns from a lot of cities. And, you know, so the Mayor's Conference was going to take a position on this and specifically take a position on the Contra Costa Public Managers Association, including, I think, our city manager had created essentially some recommendation, which was a position of supporting the legislation provided there are certain amendments. And one of those amendments would be that there would not be a new regional agency. So in that regard, there was a lot of discussion. This was supposed to be the easy item on last Thursday's agenda. It wasn't. But there was, we heard from Senator Glazer, who was there, and one of his requests was for the Contra Costa Cities to provide him the tools to be able to negotiate this on the Contra Costa Cities behalf in Sacramento. So the end result on AB 1487 was that the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference voted to oppose it unless it's amended and then to allow our state reps to have that dialogue. So I think that train is already moving forward sufficiently. I think our input into 1487 at this point probably is not going to do anything. I think obviously we should do any kind of feedback we want. I would almost recommend going through Senator Glazer. I think he felt pretty strongly about some of those things and I think that may be a better strategy on that. But let me go to your letter and give you just a couple, couple comments on my behalf. I agree with all the comments I heard already, the revisions. Overall, I like the letter. I think it hits the points, you know, that all of us agree. Just a couple of comments on the, this is a little bit of word smitting too, on the third, fourth paragraph that starts, while some jurisdictions are likely to support the philosophical principles of the CASA compact, the City of Clayton has concerns that revolve around the three main issues. I would leave the first part of that sentence out because I don't want to be pointing my finger at other cities. I think other cities actually have very similar concerns to us.
Right.
And have done it. So I would, I don't think we need.
I was more referring to like the larger cities that were, are like, you know, the sponsors.
I don't want to say the City of Clayton has concerns.
You don't want to point a little bit?
No.
But, but I would, I would take that first part out.
Because they point to us all the time.
Yeah.
All comers.
Yeah. Then on bullet number one right there, when we talk about repurposing the revenue streams used for core city services should only be done after careful consideration of each city's economic circumstances. I think you're talking about impact fees. And I think impact fees are only collected because we're mitigating an impact, specific impact. So I don't think they can be used for core city services. I mean, or maybe we need to think about the language a little bit.
Part of impact fees could fund like police and infrastructure.
They could.
Those are core, that's what, that's what I'm referring to.
So maybe it's just the wording there, but I just want to be clear. Because impact fees come from impacts caused by new developments, specifically of parks and whatnot. So that was my one thing. And then I think overall, I would prefer probably not to attach the chart. And I think only because I think, I think the letter in itself sends sort of a clear message. I think it's positive message that we want to see some of these changes. And I think we get into the weeds quite a bit in the chart. And I don't know if that adds much in that sense. So I would almost prefer just to focus on the letter with a couple of those amendments and leave out the chart. That would be my recommendation. But let me hear from this side too.
I've already voiced my opinion.
Okay. And, you know, I concur with some of these edits. I find it to be a comprehensive and well-written piece. My concern with it would be the relevance at this point because the CASA compact is already a completed body of work. And as I found out at the Mayor's Conference, things are moving extremely quickly. I mean, they're getting through committees already with a lot of this stuff. So I think getting something on the table. I like the idea of not including the chart. I think the letter speaks for itself with the amendments that you're talking about. How does this though go with the policy, the framework that we got today from the Mayor's Conference or Contra Costa County Mayor's Conference? Does this run hand in hand in a lot of respects? Because the language, and I know that Senator Glazer said, similar to what you said, if you're going to oppose something, you should just oppose it and give him the teeth to, to get up on the, on the floor and say what he needs. But in the language here, I don't see that in the, in the Mayor's Conference language. So what am I missing?
So I think what, at the Mayor's Conference, what Senator Glazer was asking was specific to one bill.
Just the 1487?
Right. Because that was a specific bill that was going to create a regional agency. So on that one, he said, oppose unless amended and give him the tools to negotiate. I think what this particular document we have in front of us, which is the Policy of Fame Act, this was sort of general principles overall. And as, by the way, as your representative to the, to the Mayor's Conference, I voted in favor of these because I think certainly supportive. So I think this is moving on its own track. I would see the letter as sort of reinforcing that, that same as a city, I guess.
It would be reinforcement.
I wouldn't, that's how I would view it.
Okay.
Okay.
Heard.
Okay.
I mean, you know, the chart has pretty colors.
Can we make the letter with colors?
I think that's less impactful. That, I think that's fair. Obviously, the, the chart goes into the weeds quite a bit.
It does, yeah.
Because legislation lives in the weeds. So the response has to be in the weeds. Because legislation lives in the weeds, so the response has to be in the weeds, but...
It's moving fast.
It is. And that's fine. I think, I think just getting the position out there is helpful. I think it will lend support to the efforts of Senator Glazer and our members in the Assembly. And so that's good. And I did, I did appreciate his comments at the mayor's conference. So I thought that they were, they echoed a lot of the things that I, the sentiment that I had as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think this is a unique issue to Clayton. I think a lot of our neighboring cities are, have very similar feelings to us. So are we comfortable, I think we're comfortable with the letter, with the edits.
Public comment, I think.
I'll take public comment as well, yeah. So why don't we open up public comment? I don't have any speaker cards, but if anyone would like to address the council, please come up. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. So given that it's now a city letter, is this something that the city staff should make those edits, and then we'll put it in the city letterhead? And Mr. Napper, please.
That's the ideal outcome.
Oh, gosh.
That's the ideal outcome. But if we could ask, because our pens can't fly as fast as you can talk, is there, you know, Mayor, is there a possibility that the vice mayor and Councilmember Juan could exchange their viewpoints and then send the staff the bottom-line letter? And hopefully, the rest of the council will be comfortable with that. And then we would put that in the city letterhead and send that out to our legislators.
Okay.
I will send you a red line tomorrow.
I can, I can send you a scribbled-out copy of my agenda packet right now.
I think I've internalized your comments, and I could red-line it and give it to you tomorrow.
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah, that would actually bore you more quickly than for us to go back and listen to the tapes to capture everything. So thank you.
Okay. We don't need a motion, anything, I think we've just provided.
Yes, a motion to approve the city position letter as revisions tonight.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
So it's been moved on second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. And that moves us into item 8C, which is Councilmember Diaz's request to consider the establishment of city council policy on elected officials receiving text or email communications from members of the public on agendized items during city council meeting. So I believe, Mr. Diaz, if you'd like to provide any opening remarks.
Thank you. In today's technology, and with the fact that our city council meetings are being streamed throughout the world, and that we are subject to input from all parties, both within the confines of the room as well as external, I believe that we need to adopt a policy that addresses the fact, this fact that this influx of communications is available, not just from text messages, but from emails, from a variety of other sources, and that if we are receiving those messages during the meeting, it's my view that we should be able to identify who was sending them to us, number one, so that when we actually disclose and finalize our position, we have a full, comprehensive view of that. We have people that come up and speak on all of our items, and they have three minutes or so to make their pitch to us, and we take that in. I just want to be sure that we're not receiving subsequent transmissions that take place after we've opened it for public comment and we have closed that, and yet council members may be receiving information, questions, whatever, from other people in the room or outside the room. And I just would like us to adopt a policy in this new age of communications. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments? I'll open up a...
I have no, I do everything on paper, and I have everything in front of me and nothing electronic, so I would certainly be supportive of some sort of policy. My question, I guess, would then be, is this going to extend to the, and I brought this up at the last meeting, is this going to extend to the Planning Commission as well?
Other comments? I'll open up a public comment, too, Bud.
I wouldn't hope that it would, because that's a, that's a public hearing. Nobody records those meetings. But it just, and I've had a discussion, and you have a copy of a letter that Planning Commissioner Shapiro had put in, and I had discussed this with him, because he and I talked about the possibility that they could also be receiving input. We just need to be open, above-board with our decisions, and that we're not being unduly influenced by other parties.
So to be clear, you're recommending a policy position, but you didn't say what it would be. Just, you're recommending that we adopt a policy position to prohibit?
That what?
You're recommending a policy position that we prohibit this type of communication?
Yeah, I want us to identify them and be completely above-board. And I don't know what that policy should look like. That's why we have this esteemed staff here to our right. They can come up with the appropriate verbiage and that. I just want to make sure that any current item that we're talking about on an agenda, and have had both public hearing and our discussion at the council, that subsequent information is not being transmitted to a member, and then that becomes part of the decision process.
So, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. Bullet number one.
Oh. The, I just want to be clear, because I think we had talked about that. I mean, I mentioned in the previous meeting, like, when the live stream was down, my kid texted me and said he couldn't watch the live stream. And I said, I think the live stream's down. And so at that, at that mo, at that time, you had indicated that, or, you had indicated that that was a potential Brown Act violation if you're receiving and communicating, you know, during the meeting. So I wanted to clarify what the position of the, of our city attorney says regarding that matter, just so that we can, you know, clarify as a matter of law what the verdict is. I read through the agenda packet, and it seems like each municipality who's adopted a similar type of policy has indicated that the guidance is not specific as to whether or not that's a violation of law, but it is a position that other municipalities have taken. So if you could elaborate, that'd be, that's my question.
Yeah, and let me maybe have, and let me correct my earlier comment, too. I mean, obviously, for a Brown Act violation, it is communication among the council members. That's what that refers to. But I think what we're talking about is really overall transparency and serving the public in an open manner. So I think it's more of a policy matter for us, so that, and obviously, for me, that's always been something that's given, that if I'm here, I'm receiving all the information that everybody else sees that I'm receiving, and I'm hearing it all, and making a decision based on the full record, so that I'm not having, you know, communications that are only directed to me otherwise. So, I mean, but let me have, if I could, go ahead.
If I could, because I actually heard two different things. One, you know, I don't know if you're moving towards a council policy that would prohibit those external communications or would be allowed, subject to disclosure, and those are, that's separate.
That's what my intent was, because I know it is not illegal to receive information from other parties, even while you're, while we're having a meeting. But I think, and just in transparency purposes only, we should disclose all those. I don't think we ought to preclude it. I understand when I talk with city, our city attorney, the only potential for it being illegal is if it's a land-use issue. Maybe she can clarify that.
Yes, maybe if I can jump in and address a couple of the questions that were asked. As it relates to the Brown Act, if you are communicating with other council members and emailing or texting, then yes, that would be a Brown Act violation. I think what was being discussed, though, is maybe communications with members of the public. So that in and of itself would not be a Brown Act violation. It can be a due process issue, which is what Councilmember Diaz was referencing.
Yeah. I want, I want us to be completely ethical as possible and transparent. If we're receiving communications from someone outside the room or within the room, I think we ought to disclose it.
So as it relates to due process issues such as land-use applications?
Right.
I would not recommend that you take any texts or emails during the meeting. That needs to be done at the public hearing, or if you do meet with people in advance or talk with them, you always have to disclose that. So I think, I think with regard to any policy, we need to be clear about, in those specific actions, you, we shouldn't be receiving emails or texts during...
And that's what I, that's why I look to your counsel for that.
Right. And so then, maybe if I can just say...
And Mr. Napper.
...one more thing. Outside of that context, I think is what we're probably having this more vigorous debate on, is the transparency aspects of whether you want to, one, be able to accept those texts or emails, and then, two, if you do, if you do want the council to be, to be able to accept them, if you want to disclose them at the time or close in time to receipt. They're obviously public records, so even if, if there is no policy to disclose, in the event we get a Public Records Act request for those, they are disclosable, whether they be on your city email or your personal email, as long as they relate to city business.
If I might just follow up. A council policy does not need to mirror law. A council policy is an agreement amongst yourselves to adhere to certain standards. In fact, we have a council policy guidelines adopted by resolution. So clearly, it doesn't need to restate law. That's always very informative. Part of my concern after it was addressed or brought up, I'm thinking about our public comment periods, where individuals get up under a laborious process where they submit a card and they're timed for three minutes. And yet, if you, as council members, are receiving additional communications, maybe from that individual who's already spoken, well, I'm wondering how, what's the fairness to the rest of the public, when that individuals or those individuals, or maybe it's just a singular individual that's doing it repetitively, they're actually getting more of your focus, more of influence to you than the rest of the general public at large. And probably, if the public thought about that, well, then they might be emailing you or texting you all the time individually, and your phones would blow up on you. And whereas a person unfamiliar with the process here would, would get up, give three minutes and sit back down and not know any different. So those are some things, just for your additional consideration.
So, I mean, I know, I'm, I'm pretty sure that this was driven by, you know, because I shared that I got, you know, my kids text me during the thing to tell me that the live stream's down. You know, before, before I joined the council, and even after, a common theme that I've heard from people is that when they ask us questions during the public comment period, they don't get an adequate response. That's, that to me is, I've heard that repeatedly. You know, there's no obligation for us to respond in any way. You know, that's just our prerogative. But I do think it's important that people have access to us. And so I always strive to meet people where they are, rather than where they happen to be here in the meeting. So if there's a mode of communication that they favor, I will do my best to engage at that level. It could be via text or email, but it could be via phone, or even if they want to send a letter. But it could also be, like, through Snapchat or Twitter or whatever. If people want to talk that way, then I'll, I'll try and accommodate them. And so for me, I always think that we should be increasing our methods of communication rather than restricting them. But, you know, going further, another common complaint that people expressed, and one that I personally shared, was that we don't have actual dialogue. You know, a dialogue is two people communicating directly, engaging in a discussion. The format here, it doesn't allow for dialogue. So, you know, we ask questions amongst ourselves, the members of the public, they're allowed to comment or ask their questions in their public comment period, and then we weigh in with our opinions. But, you know, this is not a casual setting where we could have, you know, an actual dialogue. The turn-based nature of this doesn't allow for that. And so my goal has always been to increase engagement, you know, increase dialogue. So I think people are more likely to engage when they know that their voices will be heard. And so what I've done is, you know, I first, before any of this transpired, I always do my diligence, and I research what's possible versus what is required. And so I came to the same conclusion. I think that you and I had had this discussion before on what are preferences versus requirements. And so I don't, I didn't see any restriction on having this dialogue with constituents. So, you know, when I met with people in both large and small settings, I told them very, very clearly, if they don't feel that their voice is being heard, they don't feel like their questions are getting answered in some way, then let me know, and I will try and assist them in getting their questions answered. And I think that, to me, the goal has always been to increase that engagement. But, you know, I think, I do take your points, and I think that they're valid and fair. So, you know, in the interest of maintaining decorum and whatnot, I will commit to refraining from engaging in any kind of, you know, external electronic communication during the meetings, except for family emergencies. But, so, you know, to that extent, I think that's fair. You know, I feel like this is really the only time that we are allowed to talk with each other. All the other times, we're not, and so, so that's fine. But I do think that, you know, our goal should be to provide a mechanism for people to participate in this process in an easy way, what's easy for them, not for us. And so, you know, there's, you know, as Ms. Stanway mentioned before, there are technology solutions available that will allow people to participate in real time with us, or, you know, in council, you know, we can, we, you know, they could do it here, or they could do it from home. You know, that, to me, that is something that we should allow or we should encourage. It takes resources, but I think those are resources well-spent to encourage and engage, you know, encourage engagement and meet people where they are. So I, you know, and, and really what we're talking about is, we're, I think what you were referring to, or specifically, it's not, I'm not talking about quasi-judicial actions, only legislative actions on agenda-ed items. So excluding non-agenda-ed items or quasi-judicial actions, I do think that we should encourage that kind of engagement. And so, you know, if we want to pursue those things, pursue, like, technology solutions that would allow, you know, you could have, you know, things coming. I mean, they livestream Supreme Court opinions, and you could read it as it comes. And, you know, those are, that's just part of the process, and you engage in that discussion in real time. And I don't, I don't know if that's something that we're interested in.
Let me make a couple of comments, because I think you're missing the point a little bit here, respectfully. Because I don't think any of us, I certainly don't disagree with what you just said. I think what we're talking about is unfair access and non-transparent communication during our hearings. In other words, when we are here, we receive public comment from the public. We all hear that at the same time. However, if somebody is whispering into my ear through laptops or text messages, something else, I'm getting other communication, the rest of you are not getting it. That's not, that type of back-and-forth, I don't think is ethical. I don't think it's right in a public hearing. I think we all need to hear, in a public hearing setting, what everybody, all of us is hearing. I think that's what, and that's what, those are the concerns that I've actually heard from some of our citizens who've been in the audience in some of our hearings. So I think, I'm, I mean, I'm sad that it has come to this, but I'm fully supportive of having some kind of policy that addresses and merely states the fact that when we are in a public hearing setting, we are all hearing the same information, and we're not having ex parte communications outside of that. So I think it's that unfair access and unfair engagement during hearings that only one or two of us are having and not all of us. And that's why I think we're addressing. And two more comments, and then I'll stop. And in terms of, when we talk about public comment, specifically when we talk about public comment in non-agenda items, we are not supposed to take action on those because it's not an agendized item. So there's limitations as to what we can do when, in the non-agenda item, people provide us comments. We can...
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
...take up on it on another time when it's agendized. And in terms of the setting, I mean, you look at every other city, county, any kind of governmental agency, hearings are conducted in some way so that we provide all our members an equal access. So in other words, if we, you know, and that's why we have time limits, because we can't be here until 2:00 a.m., but we also want to make sure that every single member of the public has, has an equal opportunity to provide comments on that item. So anyway, I don't think any of us, I'm certainly, all of us have discussions with members of the public, and we certainly encourage people to connect with us and let us know what their feelings are. So I don't think that's the, that's what's at heart here. I think what we're talking about is unfair access and engagement during public hearings. It's not transparent.
I always found it very strange when, this whole process, like you were talking about the, the idea that people talk to us, and then we sit stone-faced and are unable to, to talk back to them. And this is something I had to learn on the Planning Commission. When I first sat there, I thought that was the strangest thing I've ever heard, that people just talk to us and they think that we're just not responsive. The question I have is, what is the law on that with regard to engagement? I know you just mentioned the non-agendized items, but occasionally, we do break decorum for that, so that we do comment from time to time. for that, so that we do comment from time to time. Where is the line?
So on non-agendized items, as the mayor indicated, we can only give brief responses or ask questions, but you can't have this full discussion like you are having tonight on this agenda item. So you are limited. On agendized items, you can obviously-- if the speaker speaks for their three minutes and you have questions, which happened tonight, as you saw with, for instance, the Verizon representative, we had council members directly ask the speaker questions. And so you could have this exchange going back and forth, to the extent there are questions involved.
Thank you. But it's not really dialogue when it comes right down to it. So I guess that reserves us to town hall meetings, or to the things that we're doing now, where we meet with our constituents, we have coffee with them or whatever, and try to give them as much access to us and transparency as possible. And I think that we're all in agreement, that that's the way we want to handle ourselves. But, you know, with regard to this policy, again, I don't have any electronics here, so I would be in favor of some sort of decorum policy to make sure that we're all hearing the same communication. And certainly, if it is coming in electronically, that, like someone standing at the podium, they would have to identify themselves, so we know who that's coming from and how long they've spoken. And I don't know if we're ever going to get to the point where we're able to have the video stream, people call in or talk to us in that way. That would be an interesting thing for us. But judging by-- judging by the quality of what we have now, I think that's going to be-- we'll probably have 5G in town before we have that.
Put a speaker up right there.
But nevertheless, I don't mean to make light of it. I would be in favor of some kind of policy amongst ourselves. And then that would also translate to-- and I don't know how that works, but translate to the Planning Commission as well.
Just to clarify one thing about the anonymity and comment. Can you opine on whether that's a preference or a requirement? My understanding is anonymity and comment is a preference, or, like, identifying yourself as a preference rather than a requirement?
It is. You're correct. If a speaker came up and, as, you know, if they were asked to provide their name and they chose not to, or they only provided their first name and not their last, or they didn't provide their address, we can't require them to provide that information. However, I will note, if you are having a discussion about a land use application and someone is saying--
Go to the--
--"I'm the neighbor," and they won't give you their name or their address, you know, you may factor in the fact that maybe you can't confirm that they're actually in close proximity to the proposed application. But you're correct. You don't have to-- you can't require someone to disclose that information.
And we have some precedent-- I'm sorry, did I jump ahead?
No.
We have some precedent from other cities here that have policies, I see. So I guess we could follow some of that.
Yeah, I agree. I think we need to be transparent. If someone decides they're going to send us a text message and says, "Vote no on that measure," or gives me a question that I should ask, or suggests language, that's communication that is not happening within this room with the general public and everyone in the room. And that's not appropriate. It may not be illegal, but it's not ethical, and it's not transparent with the public. So I'm fine with having a policy that says we don't get external communications about items that are on the agenda, under discussion at the meeting. We all need to be meeting with our constituents and talking with them and getting their feedback on all of the issues in town. But during the meeting, everybody has to have equal access. Everybody has to have the ability to come down and be heard by everyone, and not secretly, and not having anyone be fed ideas or thoughts or additional information. That said, I do appreciate the ability to have the electronics and access to the Internet, because there have been times during our meetings when I've had a question of myself and going, "Do I remember doing this at the last meeting, or what was our reference?" And I'll go back and look at the minutes from a previous meeting to see what we said or how we phrased something, or to look up a piece of information that we've got on file, just so that I make sure that I'm basing my decisions on accurate information. And I think that is a valuable tool to be able to have. But I like to be able to say, "I am open about that," and say, "I just went back and looked at the minutes from that last meeting, and here's what we said we wanted to do." So how do we want to do that? Or something like that, to be transparent about doing that research or looking something up. And I think both Jeff and I, while we were having the conversation about the intersection, pulled up Google Maps to look at that intersection and see what was there and what wasn't there, and where are the trees obstructing the sign, and just confirming for ourselves in the mind's eye, if you will, but right there in front of us, the ability to have that electronic resource is important, I think, to be able to add to our decision-making ability. So I think we just have to have, under our council policies, an agreement that we will not accept outside communication on items that are on the agenda under consideration during a meeting.
So with that, let me open--
Yeah, the gentleman was correct, and I verified it with the maps.
Yeah, he was correct. There was only one sign there, and we saw the bumps for where it wasn't there.
So let me open this up for public comment.
Have that one around.
If any one in the audience would like to address the council, Ms. Stanaway.
And it was there at one time.
Ann Stanaway, Havilin Place--
Yeah, yada, yada, yada. There's an easy way to do this. You can turn off your services, your IM services, your email services, and you won't get those on your electronic devices, okay? All during the meeting. All you have to do is turn them off, okay? They're in services. Now, the next thing, what you can do is write on that streaming page, your web-- your streaming page on your website, there should be a section on there for comment. And those comments, once a person signs up to do the comments, which gives you their actual-- it discloses who they are whenever they make a comment. They-- when-- once they write the comment and say, "Submit," then it can broadcast right onto that screen right there. Or you can have one of the staff moderate it and then broadcast it on the stream intermittently, you know, as soon as we get enough comments. So this is a cheap way to do it, and it's a possible way to do it. And you will-- you can have your electronic devices on all you want to, if you do or don't. Just turn off your services that you don't need to have, and you won't be interrupted, and you'll be totally transparent, because everything that comes in via the stream from the people that are seeing the stream on the outside, everything that comes in will display on the screen here. And all the people who are here, and you, will be able to see the comments. Easy.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. So let's try this. I mean, I think several of us, I've heard comments about the interactions during the public hearing. So one place where we could address it is, we do have council policies currently. Can we maybe have those brought back and maybe staff to insert some draft language in there? Mr. Nepper?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think we've heard the genesis of where you're headed. Why don't you give us the opportunity to come up? I'll work with the city attorney and come up with an addition to the council policy and guidelines that mirrors what you're saying here, and then resubmit it for you to, you know, consider and adopt, or revise.
Okay. Do you want a motion on that, or do you have enough direction?
Well, I think the city attorney said it wouldn't apply to the Planning Commission, but I think the council policies also-- there's a section in there that talks about Planning Commission, so we could add it in there. So I think it's broad enough that we could encompass it in there and give us a shot at doing so.
Great.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, let's move on to the next item. Item nine. Are there any council items requests for future meetings? Seeing none, we will then move on to closed session. So let me just read this out first. So this is a closed session for conference with labor negotiator under government code section 54957.6, for the purpose of providing instructions to our city-designated labor negotiator, which is the city manager. And the matter in front of us will be employee organization, Miss Illinois City Employees Undesignated Group. So with that, we'll move into closed session, please.
Give me a couple of minutes, will you?
I can--